From March eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, as is the custom of the city council, I am pleased to start off our meeting, as we do every meeting, with our citizens' right to speak, come and talk to us about what's going on. And I have a list of speakers. And our first speaker is Carol Matthews. And Carol Matthews on deck.
I'm Carol Matthews, thirty-eight fifty-one Hoyt Street, and a member of the NRS Committee. The Neighborhood Revitalization Consultants, CZB, will give a report to us tonight on the results so far of the study. I have one comment on the scope of the NRS Committee. The twenty-seven participating citizens of the NRS study were by no means non-biased nor non-political. If this study was conducted by twenty-six oblivious citizens, this study would have had no energy or significance. We are twenty-seven diverse, deeply invested citizens of Wheat Ridge who are dedicated to bring all sides of every issue to the greatest number of Wheat Ridge citizens. We received a thousand fifty-three responses to the citizen online survey. This is a record percentage of survey results. Thanks to the efforts of our co-chairman Cory Stites, who led the communications strategy, Morgan Richards, who backed him up coordinating efforts to schedule community outreach and to distribute flyers, Guy Nommich, who wrote Gazette articles and coordinated with neighborhood schools, and to all the other NRS and community members who gave their time and efforts to make this study a success. We thank our community leaders for their outstanding effort to reach out to all of Wheat Ridge citizens. Our mayor Bud Starke publicizes survey in Mayor's Matters newsletter. Sarah Spalding linked the survey on the city website. And Krista Lewis sent her the link out to Local Works, on the Local Works website. Councilman Zach Urban and Krista Lewis sent out hundreds of postcards. And Councilman Dozeman, Duran, and Matthews did an email distribution to their constituents. Leaders of local groups, Maki Delay, Vivian Voss, Jerry DeTulio, John Clark, Joe Demott, Diane Robb, reached out to their citizen groups, encouraged them to take the survey and to share the link with their friends and neighbors in Wheat Ridge. The principals of all our local schools disseminated flyers to their student parents. And their employees of the Adult Center, the Town Center, and the Recreation Center distributed flyers to their patrons. Wheat Ridge citizens were contacted and responded. Thanks to all of you.
Thank you. And Ms. Matthews, you're our next one signed up to speak, if you'd like to. We take all, you know, we can, we can have you go ahead if you'd like to. Well, you're signed up next to speak, so. We have, we have a few, we have a few blanks, but nobody filled in the blanks, so please, please go ahead.
Okay, I'll change my hat and be a citizen. I'm Carol Matthews. I live at thirty-eight fifty-one Hoyt. As a homeowner in a single-family R-one neighborhood and a citizen of Wheat Ridge, I have very strong feelings about preserving the validity and enforcement of R-one residential zoning and codes that are in place in our community. We have a short-term rental in our neighborhood that has caused great anxiety to our neighbors. They are vexed with constant noise from travelers uploading luggage and supplies in late night hours next to their house. Strangers looking for the B and B turn into their driveways and bang relentlessly on their doors. They fear for their safety of the children and themselves with a constant influx of strange people in the neighborhood. This is an unforeseen threat to their quality of life when they bought their home in an established, single-family neighborhood four years ago. They have complained to the city to no avail, with the city's response being that there are no policies regarding Airbnbs. In a report Save San Diego Neighborhoods, problems reported about the short-term rentals were: vacationers replace stable contributing community members; the character of the community is damaged; schools closed; church clubs; social institutions flounder; what long-term citizens are replaced by transient visitors; long-term residents move away; business struggle with loss of residential customers and employees can't afford affordable housing. The housing crisis gets worse. Perspective buyers face competition from house, with house purchasing from investment companies who offer cash or better payment options. Large investment companies are offering short-term rental properties investment programs to investors like mutual funds, which give them financial resources to take over housing communities. I am hoping for the city council to consider a compromise by planning, by banning short-term rentals in R-one neighborhoods and allowing the citizens in R-two and R-three neighborhoods to decide if short-term rentals, or B and Bs, are appropriate for the neighborhoods as an alternative to long-term rentals. Please save our Wheat Ridge neighbors, or neighborhoods, for the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Janelle Shaver, and Kirk McCoy on deck.
I won't get up, but I just wanted to add a couple of cents worth. I have run into several people who did not know about the survey, and I would encourage you to open it up again. I think that this is, politically speaking, I think that this is a group that would, it's important to them that every vote count, and that as many people get to vote as possible. And I think this is a good opportunity for you to kind of follow that philosophy and extend it, reach out to more people. Because I know there's, I've run across probably a dozen people that didn't even know it existed. And I know, and I know there's good publicity, but I think there, there could be, you know, another outreach. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kirk McCoy, and Rachel Hulteen on deck.
Good evening. My name's Kirk McCoy. I'm not a Wheat Ridge resident. I live at, unincorporated Jefferson County, just up here off of Ward Road. But I am a Wheat Ridge High School graduate, and I'm an Airbnb host. So, I own four properties here in Wheat Ridge. Three of them are Airbnb, and one of them is long-term rental. I also own a couple other properties around the metro area. And I've had really no major issues in the time that I've been a host. It's disrupted the neighbors. I made sure to go around to my neighbors and tell them what we're doing and explain that if they ever have a problem, they can reach out to me directly, because as the owner of the property, I want to make sure that the property's kept in good hands as well. And I know that the Airbnb travelers are bringing a lot of revenue to the area. They're shopping in Wheat Ridge. They're constantly asking me for good restaurants to recommend here in the community. So, I know that that is bringing some value to the, to the community as well. And I care for our residents that are afraid and, you know, may have some, some negative issues, but I'm, from my experience, it's always been minimal. You know, and, and some of the things, a lot of the people that are here and may or may not speak, they're renting out space in their homes to help offset mortgage payments. And, you know, when you're down on your luck, it's a great opportunity to be able to, to make some, some income, to help make sure that you can, can afford the things. You know, our community's gotten much more expensive, and, and that's one of the things that we need to make sure that there's avenues available to the citizens to be able to take advantage of, to stay in their home. You know, and, and like I said, it's really something that I've, I've not had any major problems. There's been one party at one of my properties. I have six total properties, and it's never been, you know, more than that one issue where I had complaints. And like I said, because I've reached out to the neighborhood and told them, I was notified of what was going on, you know, we tried to get it rectified. Unfortunately, it was late at night when, by the time it, you know, came about, but at the end of the day, everybody understood, and, and, you know, we, we made amends and continued moving forward. So, it'd be a shame to, to be able to lose out on the opportunity that Airbnb brings to the city. And also, from a personal standpoint, you know, I'm a family man, I've got five children. So, when we travel, we have to stay in an Airbnb. Trying to take five kids into a hotel is almost impossible. So, if I'm not coming to a community like Wheat Ridge, and I'm taking my tax revenue to a city that is allowing Airbnbs, I would hate to see the community lose out on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Hulteen, and Christopher Byrd on deck.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Starke. My name is Rachel Hulteen, and I am here to also speak about Airbnbs and short-term rentals. I personally am a huge fan of them. I went on my count today and counted, I've stayed at over fifty Airbnbs in four different countries, seven states, and thirteen cities. I've never had a bad experience as someone who uses Airbnb. I prefer them because when I stay at an Airbnb, I typically am off the beaten track. I am exposed to more local businesses. I don't spend my money at the Black Eyed Pea, but I go to local restaurants. But I also get great recommendations from my hosts. I get to meet great people. I get to know what it's like to live in that community and not just be ushered in and out of a corporate hotel. I, I realize they're something that falls between the gaps in our community right now. And I have personally reviewed a lot of the policies that surrounding communities have adopted, and I think Airbnbs are pretty straightforward to regulate in ways that are predictable for both the Airbnb hosts, as well as the people who come and stay in the community. I think coming up with a win-win regulation that allows us to capture the economic benefits, both in terms of tax revenue, as well as local spending, but also the benefits for people who are able to use Airbnb to provide housing flexibility, I think, I think they're great. There's two of them on my block, and I will tell you, they're two of the nicest houses, because their houses have to look good all the time, because they're constantly trying to impress. And we've never had any issues. You know, usually they're people who live in their homes and are allowing other people to stay there for short term. I also want to mention, we recently hosted a deep dive club, and we had a community dialogue about why Airbnbs might be good for our city. So, I'd just like to share with you what the table of about thirteen people came up with. The reasons why they thought they would be good include passive revenue, bring money to the local economy, more money for the city's general fund, convenience, it's already happening, we can't stop them, provide alternatives to the lack of good hotels, it builds community, it exposes more people to our city, it's a sustainable practice, secondary businesses such as cleaning services also prosper, and flexible income to allow people to stay in their homes. I encourage you guys to take a look at regulations and move forward so that we can continue allowing these to be a good part of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christopher Byrd.
Hi, my name is Christopher Byrd. I live at forty-nine thirty-one Garrison Street, apartment two oh six, and I'll be speaking about the Wheat Ridge Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy. As an NRS Committee member, we undertook a multi-month process connecting with residents, hosting community events, and walking neighborhoods. And through anecdotal conversation and community-led discussion, the steering committee gathered the raw data on how citizens view the city. And because the citizens really spoke up, we had a lot to work with. And sifting through the praise about why everybody loves Wheat Ridge and the criticisms on how and where improvements could be made took long hours, including after work and on weekends. But with heartfelt discussion and heated debate, we were able to identify some reoccurring themes from the input. And as you'll hear in the presentation this evening, the themes that we identified by the steering committee and CZB were reinforced by the survey that was run. And as Carol Matthews said, we did have one thousand fifty-three responses, which is outstanding for anything really involving civic policy. And because you guys impaneled the twenty-seven members of the steering committee, who are really civic nerds, when it boils down to it, because we live for and love this work, we really went above and beyond, and this team really acted as a team reaching out to a diverse group of people, including homeowners, renters, business owners, the employees that work at those businesses, students, parents, childless households, and senior citizens. And I believe that the work of the steering committee, and based on the great amount of input that we got from the community, will really shape a policy document that truly reflects the feelings of the community at large. And talking to the people that really took the time to make their voice heard, I've gleaned that Wheat Ridge is a place with a small-town feel, friendly neighborhoods, and unexplainable quirkiness that's away from the hustle of Denver and away from the uniformity of the surrounding suburbs. And essentially, Wheat Ridge is an oasis in the metro area that we want to maintain, while still improving our visual appeal, functionality of our corridors, and our commercial districts, and our neighborhoods. And we found out that the people really love the quality of life here in Wheat Ridge. And this process hasn't been about making big shakeups or big changes. It's about really making Wheat Ridge the best city that it can be for the people who live here and the people who love the city. And I think it was really guided by the whole community. So, I think it will make us a really great place to continue living. So, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. That concludes all of the speakers who had signed up to speak, but it's not too late. So, if you haven't signed up to speak but would like to speak tonight under citizens' right to speak, please come forward, and you may speak now. Yes, ma'am? Please give us your name and address, please, and if you'd spell your last name.
Hi, my name is Nancy Ferrier. It's spelled F-E-R-R-I-E-R. I live at forty-two twelve Owen Street. And I've been a Wheat Ridge resident homeowner for thirteen years. And for the last two-plus of those years, I have been an Airbnb host, and I have a spare room in my house that I ran out to people who are traveling for a multitude of reasons. And I invite you to think about how you think of yourself when you travel, when you go out of town for a conference, when you go visit a family member for the birth or death of a, of a family member or friend. Do you think of yourself as a transient? I don't think any of us probably do, and like to be thought of as a big stranger danger. But the people who've come to my house to stay have come from a multitude of reasons. They have come from all over the world. And I like to think that I've really provided a safe place for people to stay, a clean, appealing place to stay. I mean, it's been great for me to earn that extra income, because as a single person who's a single-income household, it's really helped me. I've been able to renovate my eighties bathroom and have a nicer place. I've been able to put in new windows in my house. And it's really motivated me, like one other person said, it motivated me to spruce up my house, because it's like when company's coming, you always want your house to look the nicest. So, my neighbors benefit from it, because I've got pretty flowers outside in the summertime, and there's great curb appeal. And I've had, nobody's ever banged on my neighbor's door in the middle of the night. We have good communication about where I live, how to get in if I'm, if I'm not home, and very respectful people. It's, it's really personally enriched my life. I now have friends who live in Australia, and in Costa Rica, and in Germany. And I like to think, I'll, I'll just wrap up by saying this, I like to think that I helped create a broader sense of community in our world. Because my personal philosophy is that, you know, we're all connected by virtue of our humanity. And the more I can send people back to wherever they came from with a little bit of that feeling, I feel like it's been such a win-win. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Please come forward, sir. And if you'd give us your name, first name and last name.
Yes, I'm John McNellin. I live at ninety-eight oh one West Thirty-eighth Avenue, and I'm a frequent Airbnb customer. Ever since my daughter went to college in Washington State, in a town that didn't have motels within five miles of the campus, I started staying at these kinds of establishments. And probably nine different ones now, and everyone's been great. It's a wonderful experience. I don't care if I ever stay in a motel again, because the Airbnb experience gives me a more feeling of security. On almost every case, the owner is on the premises, and is simply living in the basement or living in another room. In one case, I stayed in a dry docked yacht in their backyard that they had bought. So, I find it a wonderful place to stay, and at some point in time, I might like the opportunity to do this myself with one of my properties. It just seems to stand in reason, if it's good for them, it would be good for us. I think that these are the most supervised kind of rentals. Airbnb clients have a rating after they stay in a place, and if they mess the place up, if they make a lot of noise, that rating follows with them, they'll have a harder time getting a rental somewhere else. So, I see this as a win-win, as an entrepreneurial opportunity for property owners. And I'll just leave you with a figure I came upon when I was reading about this. In a hundred years ago, in nineteen seventeen, about twenty-five percent of the homeowners in New York City were taking in boarders. It used to be a very common experience. If you, if you had an empty nester, if you had the empty bedroom, you'd take someone in, someone new to town, and give them an introduction to the community. So, this is an American tradition. I'll just leave you with that. Good luck with your work.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please come forward. This, this lady first.
Hi, my name's Miss Sami Covey. I live at thirty-nine ninety-five Holland Street.
And would you spell your last name for us?
My last name? Covey, C-O-V-E-Y. And my husband and I have been doing Airbnb for a long time. We have probably four hundred reviews. I signed up for Airbnb in two thousand and twelve. I have been the guest of Airbnb for multiple years. I do love Airbnb, but I'm going to present a little bit of a mixed, I suppose, insights into Airbnb. I have had love and love-hate relationship with Airbnb. When I, when we first started, it was touch and go, because a lot of the clients, or not clients, but the guests, just did not quite understand what was happening. So, they thought there was like a motel six, so they can just come and use up all the towels and soaps. And we even had people that took the Costco-sized shampoos and conditioners and took all our garbage bags and Kleenexes, and they took, cleaned us up. But, you know, that's a learning curve, because we had to put in strict rules. And if you ever get a chance to look up my name and look up Airbnb, our house rules is so long, and I even say it upfront, if you can't read, don't stay. And I, we are really selective when it comes to who stays at our house. And, but we have four hundred reviews, because we had one in Denver that we didn't live in. And we ran into all kinds of problems with that, especially when the marijuana first started to be legalized. There were so many people that were coming to just experience that. And our downtown house was a mess most of the time, even though we set up all these crazy rules. So, I'm a fan of Airbnb, but only if the owner lives there. That is what I like to see happen here as well. I'm not a fan of Airbnb hosts that have three, four, six Airbnbs, because that's not what Airbnb is about. It's about sharing your home. And so that you're there, you know what you need to do, and you know who you want to share that space with. So, we share, guests share the same space as the same roof that we share. And I like them to respect us. They're always quiet, they're clean. That's who we want to share the space with. We don't lower our prices, because we're not here to just have the place booked all the time. And it is nice to have Airbnb, because it's not booked all the time, so we get to go down and clean, air out the space. And currently, right now, my cousin is visiting. So, I blocked out the dates, and my cousin can stay. So, it's flexible, it's great. It's just, I want you to know, as somebody that has four hundred reviews, I'm against people that own multiple Airbnbs. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, while our clerk is doing that, do we have another speaker who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come forward, and give us your first name and your last name, and spell your last name and your address, please.
Janice Stravy, S-T-R-A-Y-V-E, forty-six forty-seven Flower Street. I am an Airbnb host. I've been hosting for two years, and I started hosting for Airbnb. I moved to Colorado, working for a nonprofit, not getting paid very well, lost that job, and so I was unemployed, then got a job and was underemployed. And a friend of mine, who was also an Airbnb host in Denver, helped set me up, helped me get set up with the rules, so I wasn't getting, having issues making myself comfortable, making my neighbors comfortable. And I've since, I'm now full-time employed, but it is, it's supplementing my income and allowing me to do some other things. I went to Cozumell and stayed at Airbnbs there and in Cancun. I do enjoy staying at Airbnbs as well as, as hosting. And so I just, one of the things that I wanted to add, I really wasn't prepared to talk, and don't really like to talk, but I've lived in communities where I've had issues with my neighbors, who have been loud, who have had parties, who have done things that make me uncomfortable, that I don't like, that have woken us up in the middle of the night. So, keep in mind, some people may have some bad issues, but I've had those issues with people who are permanent residents as well. I've spoken with my, my neighbors, and they have no issues with the Airbnb. They've actually met some of my guests, they've, my guests have, have joined me for dinner. They've joined me at my neighbors' for dinner. Not most of them, but some of them do. And it is a really nice experience. It brings diversity to my home, it brings diversity to our neighborhood, and certainly something that may need to be differently managed or regulated. But, you know, I would just like to have you guys keep in mind that it does allow many of us to enjoy life in a lot of ways, financially, and then just enjoying diversity of life from other people. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers who would like to speak tonight? Please come forward, sir.
My name's Tom Robinson, R-O-B-I-N-S-O-N. I live at thirty-one fifty-nine Depew Street, and I'm a short-term rental host. I do wish that I could leave a review for the college-age girls that live next door and have them no longer be able to rent there, but with long-term rentals, that's not an option. I agree with every positive thing that's been said about short-term rentals. One thing that I want to distinguish is that Airbnb is one of the short-term rental platforms, and it was created with a particular target market, and it's, it's evolved. And there are other short-term rental platforms that attract different kinds of people. But fundamentally, the thing for, the thing that I want to highlight is that if Wheat Ridge has a short-term rental policy, then we can collect revenue on short-term rentals. If we don't, then we cannot collect revenue. So, I manage property in Denver. Denver makes a lot of money on the properties that I manage. I don't manage any properties in Wheat Ridge. I'd love to, but currently, we don't allow that, and I think we should. And there are ways to set short-term rental policies up to attract the kind of people that we want in our community, to attract the kind of professionals that we want hosting the properties. And as long as there's nothing in place, people will, as we can go look right now, will host short-term rentals in their houses or in their properties. So, let's do it responsibly and collect the revenue. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any more speakers? Yes, sir. We'll put you on the clock.
I think you all know me as John Clark, no E, four, six, six, five, Swadley. And I know, I think you guys only go to eleven o'clock, so if and when you guys ever get to Agenda Item Three, could somebody ask and hopefully answer why that's not in the outside agency review committee? Thank you. Thank you. That was easy.
Thank you.
I live at 4020 Everett Street. I have an architectural company. I've designed a number of Airbnb or ADUs, successfully dwelling units in Denver and other jurisdictions. One thing I'd like to point out is a lot of people in the past have considered investing in a rental property, maybe on their street or in their neighborhood that they pick up. And you know, a few years ago, meaning probably 10 or 15, maybe you could buy one for $100, $150,000. You can't buy a rental property now. So an ADU or an Airbnb is a very good investment. I have a lot of clients that have realized that for $200,000 or $250,000, they can build an investment. Their family can stay in it. They can rent it out. They cannot rent it out. But my point being is consider ADUs or Airbnbs as an ability in Wheat Ridge that somebody can actually put a little bit of investment into their property. However, this does come along with other things. Denver with the streets has become very congested. We tried to provide a garage parking space. I think in Wheat Ridge, a good suggestion would be off-street parking, the companies that dwell in such that you don't get three cars in addition on the street. It changes people's perception of what an ADU or an Airbnb or other platforms, as the gentleman before me had spoke about. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, if you hadn't signed up and if you haven't spoken yet but would like to speak at this meeting, I'm happy to entertain you and have you come up forward and speak Okay, we will close our public comment. Thank you all very much for coming and speaking. This is obviously one of the best entertainments on Monday night. So continuing on with item number one, we have the NRS update. Mr. Goff, what's our report look like?
It's a very good report. We have a lot of people here to help us discuss it this evening. Staff, Ken Johnstone and Lauren Miklak and Scott Scott here. Yep. And then our consultants, of course, with CZB. With us is Charles Bukey, Thomas Edison, Eddie Ten and Eric Amay. And they're all with us right here. And tonight's presentation is kind of just more of an update on where the process has been, some of the key themes and findings that have come out of the process thus far. As you know, we've scheduled April 6th for a city council retreat to dig deeper into the NRS report and our consultants will be at that retreat. So we're hoping to leave more of the deep dive discussions for the April 6th meeting. But tonight, please ask any questions that you may have. And we would actually like to use today as a preface for our April 6th retreat also to have you think of any questions that you would like to be answered at the retreat or any areas that you would like deeper dives in. And we'll be requesting that information from you after tonight's meeting so that our consultants can prepare to facilitate that meeting on April 6th as efficiently as possible. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric and I think Eric's going to turn it over to some of our steering committee meeting members.
Okay, so before we bring in the co-chairs, just want to run through the order of events for tonight. We are going to, sorry. Sure. My name is Eric Amay from CZB. You want a spelling on that? It's in the memo. So we'll be, as Patrick noted, we'll be running through sort of a lot of the logistics on process. I think the last time we were here was early November, so a lot of things have happened since early November. Want to bring you up to speed on those, fill you in on those. Talk about the emerging direction of the NRS. You know, we're not going to be done with this until May-June timeline. We'll have a draft in May, so we're not to final answers yet. But we do have sort of emerging ideas and then we'll do feedback and questions insofar as you have them. But for now, I'd like to invite Corey Stites and Kathleen Martell and Rachel Hulteen to say a couple of things about the NRS.
Good evening and thank you. The three of us are the co-chairs of what started out as a 27-person steering committee. And we've lost a couple of people since we were impaneled in July. We're down to about 23, 24, which is amazing. I think we predicted at the beginning that we would probably be down to five by this time. But I want to take a second and just talk a little bit and then Kathleen and Corey will be contributing to understanding the role of the steering committee because at the end of the day, the success of the NRS is not the hard diligent work of CZB or the prudent policy-setting direction of council, but it's really the facilitation of this very representative steering committee's work with our community, with each other and with the consultants. So I want to start by just unabashedly saying CZB has really stepped into the skin of our city and has not brought any other outside expectations or agendas, but have been dynamic and nimble and listening. And they have changed direction in ways that are genuinely reflective, that they are hearing who is Wheat Ridge. One of my favorite memories of one of our early steering committee meetings, and I can't see Eric, which is probably good, we kept saying, well, we were just quirky. I think even Chris may have said it in his comments. We kept saying, well, we were just kind of quirky. We're like, not like that. And Eric's like, hey, we don't like quirky. And we're like, well, you're going to have to kind of figure out quirky because that's who we are. And that was in September. And I'm not looking at Eric, but I want to recognize that I don't think he's going to be wearing an I heart quirky t-shirt on April 6th. But what he has done and his team with Thomas and Charles is every time we've said, here's who we authentically are, these are our values. We aren't looking to change. We're looking to become the best versions of ourselves. And at its core, Wheat Ridge is a little quirky and we, as a steering committee, have really embraced that. And I just want to recognize our consulting team as well as my co-chairs and the whole steering committee for their roles in having those hard conversations about quirky because it's very hard to define. But at its core, it's why we have given up many half-day Saturdays and four hours on various Wednesdays and we're doing eight hours of open houses this week. So I'm going to let these guys talk a little bit more about specifically what the steering committee has done, but it's been a pretty amazing process. And where we are today is the result of a consulting team that has really stepped up and listened. And they probably know Wheat Ridge better than we do right now, so you might want to ask them questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. I'm Kathleen Martell and I am a civic nerd. So I love that. So I wanted to take a minute and talk a little bit about kind of the makeup of our steering committee. And as you've heard a couple of times tonight, we started with 27 committee members or community members. And when, the night the city council actually impaneled this steering committee, the decision was made to impale everyone who applied. And at first, I was like, that's crazy, that's a lot of people, that's going to be really hard. But it's really turned out to be, I think, the best thing that happened. From the original group of applicants, we are really diverse. We have, I've got some statistics because I'm also a statistic nerd. We had four people from District 1, nine from District 2, eight from District 3 and four from District 4. So we have some pretty good representation from all of Wheat Ridge. We had 10 business owners in that group. We have tenure of residency in Wheat Ridge from one year to 58 years. Four people on the committee were, have been in Wheat Ridge for less than a year, 11 between one and five years, I'm sorry, 11 less than five years, and eight people between the five to 20-year range, and seven people that have been in Wheat Ridge for more than 20 years. So that's a really good, it's a really good starting point to really see and really learn about who Wheat Ridge is. But we didn't stop there. We had a lot of people to manage, so at the very beginning, we broke into small groups. And to make those small groups meaningful, we also had residents from at least three districts on each of those small groups. We had new residents and longstanding residents in each of those small groups. We had men and women in each of those small groups and we had a business owner in each of those small groups. So even when we drilled down a little bit, we tried to keep that diversity and that, those different perspectives in place. And as small groups, we went out into the community and we asked big questions. We talked about what are the things we need to do? What does the NRS need to get right? And we also asked some scenarios that poked at the question of to get something, you have to give something and what are we willing to give in order to get? So that was the first round of kind of data collection, but we really went out, we had meetings in homes, we had meetings in businesses, we had meetings wherever they would let us sit down and ask questions. So that was the end of the first reach. And then we came back together. And after that, we had our open house where we had over 100 participants attend and answer a lot more questions about Wheat Ridge. We even had kids show up and we had a sign-up board with questions that we even wanted the kids to tell us what they loved about Wheat Ridge. So we really wanted to get some diversity of responses. So in December, we had our open house and we also shifted gears a little bit as a steering committee. And all the small groups came back to one and we realized at that point, there were definitely people who had more time and more commitment and more capacity to really dig into the NRS committee. And some people didn't have as much time but still wanted to be involved and they still had really important information to give and really important connections and really important connections out to the community and really good perspectives. So we formed a working group and about 12 people stepped up and that's a working group that's still in place. And we're meeting a little bit more often and we're drilling down a little bit more and getting information out a little bit more consistently while the big steering committee is still getting together periodically to bubble things up and to get more feedback down. So with those small working groups, our big push was the survey. And it's not a surprise that we beat expectations with our 1,053 responses. Come up a couple of times tonight. But we broke that working group into very focused groups to really try to drill into the parts of our community that we've heard don't feel like their voices are heard or have been a lot in the past. So we really were thoughtful and intentional to get out into the community and bring in more voices. And Corey will talk about that a little bit more. But what I really wanted to focus on is that we've tried to be very thoughtful with the steering committee of the volunteer time and the commitment of people in our community to really, to get down into the dirt and see what's going on and see what does make Wheat Ridge quirky and what do we want to see and how can we move forward to make us truly the best version of Wheat Ridge we can be? So thank you.
I'm Corey Stites, 11885 West 35th Avenue. As one of the co-chairs for the NRS neighborhood or steering committee, I'm sorry, I've been very excited to work with the 27 or 26, how many we have left now, steering committee members. But what we realized was that council and the rest of the city didn't just want our 27 opinions. We have them. As they've said, we are policy nerds and we all have plenty of opinions. And I know that you want the opinions of the consultants and the city staff and everybody else, but what we decided on day one is that we needed to make this a push to get as many people involved as we could. So we started out with the 27 of us. We broke into small groups like Kathleen talked about. We went door-to-door. We had small group discussions at businesses, Personal Chief of Martial Arts, Right Coast Pizza, a bunch of different restaurants throughout the city, IPi, a few other places, People's Living Rooms. We just sat down and talked to everybody that we could. And we were able to get probably 50, 60, 70, 100 people, but that wasn't enough. So what we decided to do was go out and make a big push to have an open house. December 2nd, we were able to have city council members, we were able to have city staff, we were able to have businesses, we were able to have residents, principals, others that have been mentioned, specific people in the city, were able to push and get 120 people to the rec center on December 2nd for that open house. That's one of the biggest open houses in the history of Wheat Ridge. That was one of the biggest undertakings that we've had in the city as far as getting people to an event. So that's huge. That's something we've been able to build off of. When we had our first meeting back in September, October, as we were building to this, when we were talking to the consultants, one of the things that they've found in other cities is that they thought for the survey that we were going to put out, they thought that 500 people would be a pretty good approximation for a city as large as Wheat Ridge. And I think as a collective group, the 25, 26 of us in the room said, that's not enough. So we did as much as we could, social media, postcards, door-to-door. We grabbed people off the streets. We had booths at the Senior Resource Center and other places. And we got 1,053. We doubled what the goal was for our initial goal. So we are trying to get out as many people as we can to get your opinions on how we want to get the city to look for the next 20 years. We have four open houses over the next couple of days, starting tomorrow, 9:00 to 11:00 at the Active Adult Center, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. So if you can make it to that, we want your opinion. We want to give you some of the results of the survey. Tomorrow from 4:00 to 6:00, we have an open house scheduled at Wheat Ridge High School. So if you can make it to that, it'll be the same information. So if you can make it to one of these four over the next couple of weeks or next couple of days, we want your opinion. We want to give you what we've found and we want to see what you feel, if that feels like your community. So again, Active Adult Center, 9:00 to 11:00 tomorrow, 4:00 to 6:00 at Wheat Ridge High School. And then on March 20th, 7:30 to 9:30 AM at the rec center and from 5:00 to 7:00 at Colorado Plus. So those are our four open houses we have coming up in the next couple of days. If you can make it to one of them. We also have out in the lobby, before you guys go, if you guys can take a look at some of the boards, we'd love to give you some of your opinion as well. And then on Thursday night, we will be presenting at the planning commission as well. So we will try to make sure we give as much information as we can on that. So please, citizens of Wheat Ridge, reach out to the people that are here, reach out to these open houses, reach out to us on Facebook, whatever it is, but we want your opinion. Thank you.
So we're trying to reenact an actual steering committee meeting tonight, which tend to go on forever, but are very interesting. So I'm just going to say a couple of quick things in closing about the steering committee itself. One is at no point have we really been focused on consensus. Our goal has always been to be as inclusive and representative as possible. So we, as a group, are not trying to all pound each other in the same direction because we know that's not doable. We have become very comfortable as a group with disagreeing with one another. It's really been useful for all of us. I've learned a lot. I think everyone who's on the committee has probably learned something new about the community. So we've really made a goal of, it's not about getting the one thing, but it's about understanding the whole picture as much as we're able to. There's been references to the work we did on the outreach for the survey. We actually, in January, tasked volunteers within the committee to come up with strategies to reach specific demographics in our community which are typically hard to reach, including heritage voices, seniors, families, renters, business owners. So we've really been working hard on that. So here we are today. We are entering the final stretch of the NRS and this is the really important hard work. We are going to, as you've heard this week, get one more round of input before the consultants go do their, they like squirrel away in a little cave is what I've heard. And they're actually going to like make sausage out of all of the hard work our community has done. The steering committee is really committed to doing the work that's needed to ensure that we're having those discussions, we're keeping that dialogue open. And so I just, I want to thank everyone who's participated in any respect and stay with us. There's still some work ahead and I am as excited as anyone else to see what that looks like. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Well, that's going to shorten my presentation by quite a bit. Mayor's happy, we're happy. This is the part on process. We'll blow through this pretty quick. Co-chairs did a pretty good job, I think, of describing some, a lot of the things that have happened. We kicked off in July and August, got started, you know, spent a lot of time in rooms like this, writing on the wall like that. Fall was the process they described about doing a lot of small group meetings, which was interesting but also sometimes uncomfortable, a little bit weird, a new way of doing things. As Corey talked about, having a lot of these little smaller, more intimate conversations around, you know, just sort of key issues and these weird scenarios we ask people to consider. Here's one at Bardo on Saturday morning, more time in rooms, writing on the wall. This is what being on steering committee is all about. This is what being on steering committee is all about in a planning project. We were back to CU as we talked about it before, early November, ran through some data. And then a really, really big milestone for us was the, the open house, where we had over 100 people and went through a lot of stuff, you know, sharing some information, gathering some information, arguing with each other in a friendly way, doing an interactive mapping exercise, this was really cool, we'll talk about this more in a couple of minutes. And then we had to get together and figure out what it all meant. So this is another Saturday morning. That all rolled into our online survey. So each one of these steps was building, you know, you build on one, build on the other, build on the next one. It's an accumulative process, and it all kind of, it's like a snowball. And so that rolled into our survey where we got, you know, over 1,000 responses, interviewed and, excuse me, advertised it on social media, advertised it on, in the Gazette, city website, all those places. We customized our advertisements in different ways for different audiences. Here's one for senior citizens, here's one for business owners. We were very happy with, with the response we got. I think as a percentage of population, it is a record for us. I don't know how many projects we've done, Charles, over the years, how many, what number we claim at this point, but I think on a per capita basis, Wheat Ridge destroyed our, our record for survey response. So this brings us to where we are today in the timeline, and the, sort of the main part going forward from here tonight is to talk about really kind of what it all means, what we found, what the implications are of what we found. Before we do that, though, we want to sort of stop, zoom out, and talk about something that's kind of important. So, and I'll explain this in a minute. But as we go through this process, as we, we tend to do in our planning processes, and we do not just revitalization work, but we do comprehensive planning, we do housing strategy, both for affordable housing and also for housing that's too affordable, but we do a variety of kinds of work. And whatever we do, wherever we do it, whoever we are advising, we try to get them to focus on the fewest number of things that are the most important. All right? Sometimes Charles talks about planning as a Christmas tree, and you know, what happens? You put too many ornaments on your Christmas tree, it falls over, right? I've had that experience personally, I don't know if you have, but it's something that we try to avoid. It's overwhelming for a community development director, it's, it's overwhelming for a council, for the staff who have to implement it, and it can be overwhelming and exhausting for the community that's part of these efforts as well, right? So we try to, at the beginning, we try to widen the funnel, and then we try to narrow it. What's the fewest number of moving parts that are the most important moving parts that we can put into this project before it is done? So this guy's name is Pareto. Pareto is an Italian engineer and mathematician, born in the 19th century, and came up with a number of concepts, but the one that we like the best and we always invoke is, is the 80/20 rule, okay? And the question that we always ask ourselves, that Charles always asks, is what's the 80/20, right? Which is a way of getting to the answer. So the point of this is, you've got the efforts that you control, okay? And you've got the outcomes that those efforts produce. And 20% of your efforts on the left create 80% of the outcomes on the right. That's the 80/20 rule, all right? If you follow the 80/20 rule, and you invest your efforts, and the 20% that create the 80%, that's good, right? That's ROI, that's bang for the buck, that's where you want to be. And this is the opposite, okay? So exasperated city managers will often slip us an extra 20 to put this into the slide deck right before retreat, so the council gets, understands the idea of prioritization, right? But this is how we tend to think about planning, and this has been a, a sort of guiding principle for us in this project. It's not every single thing that could be on the table, it's only those most important things that need to be. So here's kind of the boiled down version of where we are. We looked at this as taking the pulse of the community more than anything else, and what we found is Wheat Ridge is, is pretty satisfied with how things are going. You know, we, we were poking around the edges for six months, trying to figure out what's the big problem here, what's the big problem here, right? And there weren't really a lot of big problems, and that's a good thing, okay? I think as Rachel pointed out a couple of minutes ago, Wheat Ridge doesn't really want nor require a whole lot of big change, right? I think we wrote in the memo, you know, whatever the, the situation was in the early 2000s that prompted the approach to, to the original NRS, you know, there was a real sort of a feeling of being at a crossroads. That's not where Wheat Ridge is today, okay? And that feeling comes out as you talk to people. It does want a couple of things, though. There's a, a strong desire for neighborhoods to self-manage change at the neighborhood level. So it's a theme that we've been hear, heard a lot about, sort of, it's not reflexively anti-change so much, it's, we want to shape it, we want to have some say in it, we don't want to feel like it's being done to us, right? And the closer you get to my house, the more I feel that way, all right? We'll talk in a few minutes about some ideas we have around that, but there's some things you can do on the process side as a city government to, to help to ease those tensions a bit. And it's also just, comes through very loud and clear, this data is clear, not just in the work we've done, but also if you go back to the, the resident survey from last year, it's also in there, and is not, should probably not be a surprise to anybody who's in this room, that the main corridors in town are sort of lacking in aesthetic quality, and people would like them to look better. So I'll run you through a little bit of, some of the input that we got. And this is information that we'll share at the open house, as Corey described, there's some information out in the lobby tonight. If, if, if you're not here for short-term rentals, you can, you want to follow us out the door and talk about it, we'd be happy to do so. But this is what I was getting at when we said people feel pretty satisfied with life in Wheat Ridge. Just a couple of examples. Your resident survey last year, 81% of people said overall quality of life is good or excellent. You know, we found something similar, 90%, good place to live. We asked people, considering a number of factors in quality of life, has it gotten better in the past five years? 50% said yes. That's pretty good. 24%, you could say, they said it didn't get worse, right? So that's all right, too. We tended to ask people a lot in our line of work about whether their community needs to make a, you know, sort of like, stay on the course that you're on now, make a slight deviation or make a U-turn. So that's kind of language that we use quite frankly, frequently, and we asked some form of that question, and most people said, "You don't need to make a U-turn, that's for sure." So that's good, too. And by the way, so all these things that are good, all these numbers that are good, they're also backed up by objective data in, in many cases. It's not just, it's partially the strengthening market, it's partially you're sitting next to Denver, and that's a good thing, but it's also a credit to, to the city and to the council, it's made some good decisions in the past as well. So back to that comment about people wanting to manage change. We'll just spend a little, a couple of minutes talking about each one of those big things, managing neighborhood change and improvements in the corridor, corridors, and then we'll talk about some more minor issues, but some things that are driving that, you know, when you've got a strengthening real estate market, as Wheat Ridge does, and values are rising as they are, it just starts to make sense to make changes to properties, right? It makes sense to pop the top, it makes sense to add the second bathroom, it makes sense to try to figure out maybe how to put an ADU in there to maximize the value of your property, whatever it is. But after a period of, a, a certain period of time when things didn't change a lot, it now seems to make more sense to do that. The numbers just work better. It's not going to be the case on every property, but it is the case in an increasing number of properties. And this is what some people are, after a long period of no change, maybe on their street, on their block, in their neighborhood, they're starting to see some things in that realm. And it can be, it can be jarring. And so this is kind of the key question, is, is not how do we freeze everything in amber if we're uncomfortable with change, but rather how do we effectively manage change? And we think that, you know, again, back to my original caveat, we're not done yet with this project, we don't have all the answers, everything's not fully baked, these are emerging ideas. But this is actually one that we think could have some good applicability in Wheat Ridge, which is to do some more neighborhood level planning and engagement, which is, it's not rare that a city the size of Wheat Ridge doesn't do that robustly. It's a, kind of a small place to do that. However, given circumstances, we think it is a good thing to look at. There are a lot of good models, we know of them, we've built them, we've run them as individuals in different places. But the idea would be to sort of push communications, engagement, planning work down to something below the citywide level, closer to where people are, give them a stronger sense that they've got a stake in it, that they've got a say in what's happening in their neighborhood. And it isn't always about inviting everybody into the high school gymnasium and saying, "All right, thumbs up, thumbs down on this development project," or "Do you want everything to stay the same?" It's more like helping them understand, you know, Carol's fond of carrying around the zoning map and saying, "Well, look, people don't know what zoning district they live in, they don't know what the possibilities are on the left side of their house and the right side of their house. There are entitlements in that land," right? As one example. So some of it's educational, help people understand that, what's possible. Some of it is to help people understand how they can get themselves involved in public decision-making, which is our, not just our right, but also our responsibility as citizens, right? There are, on the far left and second from the right, there are sort of some more positive things that, that we're seeing as well, that there's a real sense of a desire on the part of people in Wheat Ridge to get involved in their neighborhoods and, and with their neighbors because they want to be social, because they want to build connection, because they want to have a sense of, "I'm from a place within Wheat Ridge," right? That means something. And that's important as well. And before we leave this, I really want to focus on the far right section there, which is, there are reasons, and there are the right, there are right times to do this, to try to solve every problem at a citywide level, right? So if you live, if you're one street off the Denver line, or you're, you know, sitting out by somewhere on Tabor, like you get the same solution, right? And there might be times when that's right, but there are a lot of times when that's not actually right. That, there's got to be some different strokes for different folks, that different kinds of neighborhoods need different kinds of solutions, that there may be a, a one fix over here that's not the fix over there, right? And so a, a neighborhood scale planning system would allow you to do that better, give you more flexibility in that regard. It's also the case that there might be issues where it could be the same fix, but it's not the right, the way of getting to the same fix over there and over there, it needs to be customized by neighborhood. So it could be that, a lot of times in planning work, and certainly here in Wheat Ridge, we can walk into a situation and say, "We know what the answer is," right? "We've been doing this a long time, we've sort of seen it all, we know what the answer is," right? And your city staff can often do that as well, because they've been around a long time, they've seen it all. But that's not the point. The point is, if you don't allow people, through a process of exploration and discussion, to sort of get to the conclusion on their own, it's never going to fly. And again, we think that a neighborhood scale planning system could help you do that. Here's just some of the survey responses that back up, we think back up what we're saying. 59% said that the small town life in Wheat Ridge is something that's important to them. That's particularly true because, you know, you've got really big neighbors to the north, to the south, to the, to the east, and there's a sense in Wheat Ridge that our smallness is important to us, right? And smallness also equates to, we know people, right? Again, back to the uniquely tailored initiatives, you know, 3 and 4 think that's a good idea. A lot of people, again, 79%, think there's a need to engage or re-engage on issues that directly affect them. That's, that's, you know, again, if it's next to my house, you better ask me kind of thing. And again, the positive side, 62% said if their neighborhood doesn't have a, some kind of neighborhood organization, they'd like to participate in one. How you would actually manage this, break it down into smaller pieces and sequence it, this is the, we talked a few minutes ago about the mapping exercise that we did at the open house. It was really kind of cool. We took those 85 maps that we got, and we, the first thing we did is, at the steering committee, we broke the steering committee into a bunch of teams, and we said, "Here, everybody takes 20% of these maps, right? Try to make a, try to write it all down, make a composite map." And that was kind of fun. And then they gave those to us, and then Thomas went into his office for three weeks and figured out how to turn all those lines into one set of lines. And this is only one option, you know, it could turn out to be something different, but, you know, for instance, what if the city were to be broken into those kinds of pieces, and those were neighborhood planning districts, for lack of a better description? That could be the, the scale at which the, you know, the planning engagement work could happen. So that's sort of the general idea that we're thinking about playing with. To our corridors, this is data from our survey, NRS survey, as well as the resident survey that just, again, points out revitalization of business areas is important, our main corridors aren't looking the way we want them to look. We actually, in our survey, we had respondents rank sort of from best to worst, what they thought the corridors looked like. I know this is hard to see, and you don't have to see it, but this is just an excerpt from our, our map, one of the boards we're going to use at the open houses this week. It's not just, it's not good enough, you know, for us to say, you know, is corridor X good or bad? Yes, no? But we're going to use this opportunity to get some more nuanced feedback, some more detailed input, so that when this, the NRS makes some recommendations around corridor work going forward, that we've got some more detail as to what the scoping ought to be for those things. And then we'll hit some, some other issues here really quickly. So on the first one, property conditions and code enforcement, this is one of those things where I think if, if you were in this room back in November 5th, there was a perception that some of the data we were bringing was, was a bit negative, that it was a little bit of a downer. And we are sort of hardwired to try to find, you know, poke around and find the problems, as I said. And this is one of those, those things that we suggested the city ought to pay attention to, particularly on conversions, ownership properties converting to rental. We have some data on that from the American Community Survey, this was in the interim report, some of you might have read. It's also the case that we have assessors' data that suggests that about 15% of single-family detached homes in Wheat Ridge today are absentee-owned, which, you know, sort of corroborates this data as well. But, you know, as we asked around, and we know, we, let me step back and say, one of the things that we like to suggest as consultants, because we've seen it be very effective and a good tool in a lot of places, is a rental inspection program. We know Wheat Ridge has considered rental inspection program in the past, it hasn't, hasn't been accepted. And so we sort of wanted to ask that question again. And as we asked questions about property maintenance, property conditions, code enforcement, we found that people really, it wasn't a B that was in anyone's bonnet, it was a B in our bonnet as consultants, but it wasn't a B in the bonnet of the community, really. Doesn't mean that some people don't think that it's an issue, but we were, have not picked up on any real support for a rental inspection program, nothing that would cause the city to revisit those conversations that it's already had previously, and not a, a real strong support for additional code enforcement resources. So it doesn't, again, doesn't mean you don't need code enforcement, doesn't mean that you don't continue to do it, but there may be sort of different avenues, more targeted, more surgical, that actually in some ways align with what the police department's already doing. So that's more incremental. But I just wanted to call that out because it, it could be conspicuous in its absence if we never spoke about it again. Here's another one, AD accessory dwelling units, more fondly known as ADUs. This is something the city has discussed in the past as well, it's looking to the NRS to make some comment on that, and it will. We're going to use the open houses this week to try to get drilled down a little bit and get some more information on that that could be helpful in moving the conversation forward. You might know these numbers, these were your resident survey numbers from last time on ADUs. 48% support, 22% opposed, 30% are either neutral or don't know. So we've heard in the, in the past in Wheat Ridge many times, Larry's talked about it, Ken has reminded us of it, that whenever we ask questions, we need none of the above as an option, right? But we've come around to this other thing that we like, which is, "It depends." The answer to a lot of questions falls in the category of "It depends." So that there are a lot of nuances around an issue like ADUs, for instance, some are around design and form, a lot of them are around use. around design and form, a lot of them are around use. So we're going to try to get some more input on that, that will hopefully, hopefully be helpful going forward. This is sort of a statement we put into our survey, it got a lot of response, which is, keep talking about it, learn more about it, educate people about it, so we can have, you know, better conversations. It might be worth pointing out now, because we promised some people that we would say this, is that as professional planners and housing analysts, back to the eighty-twenty conversation, we don't see a lot of juice for the squeeze on ADUs necessarily, you know, it's, I say no, Charles, not, not very much, Charles says zero. By the time you get an actual best practices ADU ordinance put, you know, in your code, and the number of people who actually try to get through it and finance a project, the number of ADUs you're likely to build in Wheat Ridge over ten, or fifteen, or twenty, or thirty years is, is probably so small, that it's, it's not a big issue either way. So we just wanted to say that. Doesn't mean individual households won't find value in it or won't want to do it, but as a matter of policy, that's, that's something different. However, like we said, even though that's the opinion we hold, our commitment, commitment within this project is to provide you some more, some more information to work on that going forward, if that's what you choose to do. Okay, so just in terms of next, I'm just about done here on the slides, next steps, we're going to do the open houses this week, we're going to go talk to the planning commission on Thursday night, give them a similar briefing to the one you're getting here, and then we'll take the additional feedback and input we get this week, and we'll go in and start writing, and be back with a draft NRS document somewhere around very late April or very early May, and expect to be back to talk to you about that again. And then, of course, in the interim, be at the retreat as well, talk more about this in detail. So that's all we have in terms of information to give in this format. If you have questions or feedback, we're happy to discuss it now, and I'll, I'll stay here, and Charles and Thomas can do color commentary from over there.
Thank you, thank you. Nice, nice presentation and a brief, you're right. So, we'll open it up for questions from council. Can we all talk at once? Mr. Matthews?
Of course, I'm always ready to talk. I'd like to thank, first of all, all the people that participated, surveyists, surveyors, all the people that have dedicated their time to this, because I think it's extremely important, and I really appreciate it. I have a couple of questions, and maybe some of them don't have to necessarily be answered tonight, since we are going to have a retreat, but I'd like to get them on the table. One of my questions is, have you folks compiled a bit of a metric to see how well we accomplished our two thousand and five goals? You know, to see what we came out of from that NRS, and have we actually did what we said we wanted to do, and where we maybe were successful, and maybe where we went astray? If not, I'd like to get your professional opinions on how that turned out. Do you want? I'll do this one at a time, so you don't have to remember all the questions.
Okay, all right. We have done that at a high level, Larry. A lot of the things have been attempted, the comp plan mirrored a lot of those things, and then there were some good implementation that came out of the comp plan as well. Some of the things sort of went by the wayside, and some things are, like every, the reason you do, you check in on planning processes and you redo them every ten to fifteen years is because conditions change as well. And so the conditions that prompted a recommendation fifteen, seventeen years ago might not be applicable today. So I don't have the blow-by-blow for you here right now, today, but we've got a few things that are listed on the materials in the lobby. It's not an exhaustive list, but it's a high-level list, and we could discuss that at greater length at a future date.
Yeah, and I would, I'd like you to take a look at that, because I'm concerned that we may be, well gee, should I say this, the marijuana city are smoking our own dope a little bit, and think we've done well, or think we've done poorly somewhere, and it just, I'm not expecting you guys to spend hours and days and weeks, but kind of take a look at it and see if you can give us some hints on what your experienced eyes might see on that topic. The other thing I see is, we, we value our small-town character, and how does a high-density population fit in with this identity? And have we done any, is it kind of a chuckle-and-hide thing, so we, have you got any feel for, for lack of a better term, for me, I would say an average density per whatever, square mile or whatever, but are we, is there something we need to be looking at there? Because the general push everywhere in this urban metropolitan area is for high-density stuff, and is that being addressed in the final report? That's, you know, I'm, I know I'm pushing it here, and so if you want to think about that, save it for the retreat.
Okay, we'll, we'll save that one.
Okay. Actually, I've got to go through this stuff here, and some of it you answered, that's why I've got to go through here. Tell you what, let me, let someone ask some questions, and I'll, I'll get three or four more of these found, and then go back to it.
Very, very good. Other, other questions for Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate all the effort that has gone into this, and I'm very appreciative of the response that our citizens have provided into this process. As you speak to the neighborhood planning process and your desire to sort of elicit or recruit more participation at the hyper-local level, I was just noticing the other day that they're now talking about putting emergency alerts on Netflix because people aren't tuned in to what's going on, and so in that same vein, if we can't get people to be alert to a state of emergency, how are we going to get them to participate in a meaningful way in these types of processes that are going to obviously take more attention and time by the residents, when we just had a recent city council appointment of one applicant from that district who desired to serve? So I just see, as much as I've seen the participation in this process, it goes back to the eighty-twenty rule. Twenty percent of the people were very involved in this process, the other eighty percent are out living their lives, the whole live, work, and play thing. So in my mind, it's a, a question of, looking back at the research, roughly five percent of the population participates in these processes, so how do we know that we're getting the feedback from the majority of residents on important issues when, just in reality, they're not interested in participating for a variety of reasons? So I don't know who wants to speak to that, just.
Charles, you want to weigh in on that?
Sure. Actually, it gives me a chance to, to respond to that, but maybe tie it into a little bit of what Larry had teed up a moment ago. See if I can connect them. So yes, it, there is the eighty-twenty. In my experience, if you get one percent, you're in good shape.
Please speak close to the microphone, or it won't go in the tape.
All right. If you get one percent, you're in good shape. And so if, if, it, numbers do matter, and from our point of view, you're far exceeding those nominal numbers. But it's only, to some, to some degree, it's, it's, there are more dimensions to the, to the, to the matter, right? And so, for example, the tone of the feedback matters, the quality of the feedback matters, the extent to which citizens appear, at least to us, to be informed matters, the extent to which the community is deliberating as adults matters, right? Deliberating thoughtfully, sharing ideas back and forth. And I think as Rachel had pointed out in her remarks earlier, the sophistication to move beyond a fairly sophomoric consensus-driven approach to something that's more evolved and more dialogue-driven and inclusive, right? So tone, content, characterization, all matter. As one of the planning partners who was here in two thousand and five and two thousand and six, I also, and to tie it, tie it a little bit to what Councilman Meadows raised, Matthews had raised, and that's that, the community feels a lot better today than, than when I was here. I mean, I've been here incrementally over the last fifteen years, but it feels so much, so much sharper, so much more well, more organized, lubricated, it's functioning at a, at a much, much more refined level. And so I think it comes through in the surveys, but it also comes through in the anecdotal observations over, over the last fifteen years. So I think you're in really good shape, not just numerically, but in the quality of the feedback we're getting.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
I want to thank all those folks that worked on the project, because I know you guys have been working a lot, so thank you. And, and all those that did the survey as well. I have just a couple of questions, and one of it does kind of follow along the lines of Mr. Matthews and density, so I, I would like, or hope that we touch on that at our retreat. I think the other thing that I think would be interesting to touch on is something that when we were in a, I, I always remember this, because it sits closely with both of our topics today, is from a conference I attended in San Francisco, I think it was a year ago, where it was kind of the whole NIMBY, not in my backyard type of, of viewpoint. And, and, and I think that you saw a lot of that, like, and I think when you were talking about some of the neighborhood strategies, you know, that in, in some cases, oh, that might be okay in a different neighborhood, but not my neighborhood. But from a policy perspective, some, sometimes, as you were also saying, that's easier to do, and sometimes it's not as easy to do. And, and I think we even see it in some of, and, and I'll put these two together, in some of our higher, more high-density projects recently, is that it was okay over here, but in a very similar neighborhood around a school, you know, it, it, it's, it was tough as a council, because I think that similar projects had different outcomes, and, and I think that from a policy standpoint, it's, it's hard. So I guess my other, and I can put notes down, would be, you know, how, I don't know if you guys have the answer to that, but I, I, I think you see a lot of that, that it, oh, it's okay if they want to do it down there, but not here, but it's a very similar demographic. So I, I guess, you know, how do you address that and have it still be the diversity and that type of thing? It's, again, it's not an answer now, but I think as a council, it's a policy that we often see on the dais that it's hard to be consistent, or do, should we be consistent or in some circumstances? So I think that that would just be for a retreat question.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
I'll say a couple of things, by way of feedback, and then, and maybe a couple of questions again, I don't know that they have to be answered tonight, and maybe they stage for the retreat. And I will echo the thanks, and, and I'm sure everyone over here and everyone watching probably thinks it's just courteous for us to thank you, but it's more than that, I assure you. I know how much you guys are working. I, I've benefited from, from kind of seeing it happen and, and hearing people who are, who are enthused by it, and obviously, a lot of people who weren't engaged being engaged right now, it's really, really important. I know that, and I truly thank you for doing the work. Also to CCB for, for engaging, and, and I think it was really important to, to hear it, just, and listening, and, and not only attempting to lead us through, but following some of the things that, that, that we're throwing at you, so thank you for that. Just feedback, I, I think I like the poignancy of it and getting down to a very short list of things. And just to comment on the two, the, the, the neighborhood planning program, or whatever version that, that comes, I, I support that, I, I think it's pretty obvious that, that that's either happening, and in a way, we've been talking about it, maybe not in the most effective way, but we've talked about neighborhood identity for, for years. I think this brings it to a new, into a new light and gives it some possible direction that's obviously very needed. I think it's a huge, a lot of questions about how you execute this, and so I, I hope we can talk about that, because from a policy standpoint, I think it's much more difficult, and I'm not trying to be negative, I'm just, I, I think there's a lot for us to talk about, but, and, and try to get right as much as we, as much as we can. But we have been listening, I have been listening, I know that process and our processes are, are important to people, and that we need to, to talk about them in a transparent way, change them in a transparent and collective way, and, and try to make them better, so I'm, I'm ready for that discussion. Corridor improvement, or corridors and nodes, I, I think is great. Again, this is in many ways something that we've been discussing and perhaps struggling with, if we're honest with ourselves, obviously, in, in, in certain areas. So a question, or just to put out there in my reaction to this, that we can talk about later, you know, I didn't see some things, the, the bullet point was kind of talking about commercial improvement, or, you know, essentially, and I don't disagree with that at all. However, there's other improvements in corridors that I know we've been discussing, and so I'll be anxious to kind of understand how that fits or doesn't fit. And I'll give you an example, Thirty-Eighth was not on this list in any way, which is a question, why not? We don't have to answer that question today, but we do need to talk about that. And, and not on it for two reasons. One, in a commercial area that we've long discussed, but also in, in, in an area that is non-commercial but has corridor deficiencies, west of, of Kipling, it's one of the, you know, top items. So I just want to know that we can still talk about that. If it gets, you know, if, if it doesn't fit in this, and we come to that, to that place, that's fine, but it, it would be part of my understanding of corridor, at least right now, and so I didn't see it in here, and I'd like to talk about it. Twenty-Ninth is, is a, you know, is not, does not show up in here. So there's obviously other nodes and other corridors that we should probably discuss, and so I would anticipate being able to do that when we, when we sit down. So I don't even know if I asked a question, so you don't have to answer anything.
Good.
Would you mind, Mayor, if just quickly respond to a couple of things?
Please, please.
There's a, there's a hierarchy of corridors that we've identified, and the committee's done a lot of work on that. We're sort of doing a flyby tonight, and so there'll be more detail and more area covered, you know, in the final report. So yes, we can, we can talk about that later. To your earlier comment about sort of the thinking through the potential logistics and how would you implement something like a neighborhood planning program? This, the, the implications for change, for doing things differently and doing more, are not lost on us. And certainly, that would be something that's discussed in the report, that there are, there are, there's work plan implications, there's budget implications, there's personnel implications, there's a lot of things going on in there, so that will, that's not going to be ignored either.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Ms. Hoppy, and then I'll come back with you, Mr. Keeter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to our consultants, I appreciate all of your hard work on this, but especially thank you to all the citizens who have sacrificed their time and volunteered, and were, have only been paid in handshakes and pats on the backs and high-fives, and I really.
And Chipotle.
And Chipotle. And I really, really appreciate all the time that you've dedicated to this, because I know that it's, it, it is struggling to, it is a struggle to make sure that you can balance what you already have going on in your busy lives, and then also being a champion for our community. With that said, I would like to, I would hope that the co-chairs would join us on April 6th for the retreat, so maybe you guys can consider that, it would be nice to have your resources there. As far as the information that's been presented, we do have a memo in our packet, and if you have not seen the memo, it's a six-page, and so if you get the opportunity to go online and, and read that, please do. There's a lot of information in it, but, and it starts with input received, and then it kind of goes into like preliminary direction. So input received, and it says corridors and nodes, and it says preliminary directions, corridors and nodes. corridors and nodes. So what I would really like to see in our retreat is where do these preliminary directions fall in line with the strategic plan that we already have in place and with our current goals that we're working towards? And do some of these help us achieve our goals more quickly? Do some of these maybe completely kind of wipe out our goals? And I'm not trying to take our planning session on the 6th into strategic planning. That's something for our city that I think happens again in two years, maybe. But what I would like is, I want to make sure they align. I want to make sure that, you know, with our strategic plan, we're already have our staff walking down those roads, and so I want to make sure that they align with the work that's been done. And if they don't align, then we should maybe start looking at what goes on a back burner and what comes to the front burner.
Do you have anything in there? Okay. All right, Mr. Keter.
Thank you. I'd like to, again, echo what everybody said in terms of gratitude for the, everybody's work on this. I am particularly heartened by the fact that there are folks here tonight who were heavily invested in this and have wildly divergent opinions on some of the issues, but everybody is, appears to be very invested in the final project, the final product. And so besides the good recommendations and policy to come out of this, I'm hoping this also can be a guideline for process and how we actually have discussions about these sorts of issues and find ways to, nobody's always going to get their way, but the idea of everybody feeling that they're invested in the outcomes. The one question I had about the survey is, any of it broken down geographically? The memo touches briefly on the idea of, and there's recent sociology on how people react, respond often more to kind of what they perceive. They can more easily see negative outcomes than they can see what the positive impact of something might be. And I was just curious if there's any information as to how people's opinions track with where change has already happened versus where it's coming.
When you say where it's happened versus where it's coming, can you say a little more about that? Just elaborate?
I guess fundamentally, the question is, is the data able to be broken down geographically? Certainly, there are parts of the city that are more urban, and so wondering whether there's any correlation between positive and negative feelings about the city versus...
Based on where you live, more or less?
Right.
Yes. Yes, it is possible for that to be done at a certain level. One shortcoming potentially is the, it's not always clear, so we asked people in the survey, sort of where do you live in Wheat Ridge? And gave them, I don't know, Thomas, a dozen choices, maybe, based on our best understanding of how people think about the names of the geography of Wheat Ridge. So we can give that a shot, knowing that it'll be, wouldn't take it to the bank totally because it doesn't account for a lot of things. So for instance, if we said east Wheat Ridge, that could be a lot of places, you know, let's say east of Wadsworth, as one example of why it can be fuzzy. Another could be that one of the things that we learned in studying, objectively studying Wheat Ridge, is I think Charles, it was Charles who said, "The only pattern is there is no pattern." So in Wheat Ridge, it's fascinating to look at maps of real estate values and code enforcement violations and all that stuff that we love to look at as consultants, and it just looks like a Jackson Pollock painting. And so we may be able to run those correlations and those cross tabs and find out, but it also could be that you and I could be two blocks apart, and you could have a very different feeling about our neighborhood because you've got a certain set of neighbors, I've got a certain set of neighbors. Trash trucks show up at a certain time at my house, show up at a different time at your house, just a lot of variables that kind of mess that up. Just trying to be fully honest.
Sure. And the question was asked with the understanding that the lack of a pattern can sometimes be a pattern.
Sure.
And I would also say that we can try to do some of the cross tab calculation, as Eric was noting, but in addition, you're buried in some of the appendices of your 2017, 2018 survey, there were some more quantifiable data based on council districts, so we can kind of overlay that as well and probably get a pretty good understanding.
Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Weaver?
I'm going to be the data nerd and survey nerd here for a moment, and I just wanted to, first of all, thank everyone that has been involved. I really, really appreciate the process of this, and I just would like to call that out on the cities and CCBs and everyone who is involved, because what I think is pretty incredible about this process is, you know, we're going towards an outcome, but the process itself actually created outcomes in its sort of cycle. And it's pretty incredible for me as a person who loves data and then asking questions like, how do we, how do we trust this data? And, you know, the first process of engaging the citizen group and then moving on to the open house, and I know this has seemed like a long process for a lot of people in Wheat Ridge, but the data that then, then going into that survey that we were able to get is just amazing. So I really want to thank everybody's efforts and thank CCB for helping with this process of the survey because I think the data is something we can really trust, and just want to thank everyone.
I want to just say, I won't speak for Charles and Thomas necessarily, but the way I tend to look at this work is, I don't trust any one piece of it because we all know that any one thing can be screwed up. So what we're looking for is what are the things that hold up, right? What are the things that are, can we look at and say, we didn't see this one time, we didn't see it two times, we saw it six times, 25 times, right? And to the extent that that also lines up with your resident survey, right, which was rigorous in ways that ours wasn't designed to be, it's just more backup and more support. So that's why we sort of do things the way we do, is that we figure something will go wrong somewhere, but, you know, enough opportunities, we'll get it right by the end.
Thank you. I would like to sort of bring our discussion to a close on this item with our thanks, my thanks to CCB for providing us a leadership in this process and for bringing us a really interesting interim results and a preliminary report. I think we're all looking forward to receiving more of the meetings that we're having, and we have four public meetings this week, two in the morning, two in the evening, on different days and different times and different locations. So I hope all of our citizens will be able to take an opportunity to join into those meetings and once again, you know, discuss with us and help us kind of ferret out a great direction for our city. I want to go back to something that Mr. Keter said in thanking the members of the committee, that we got a wide range of opinions. Ms. Matthews talked about that, and I think it's very important for us, one of the really hopes that I had coming out of the NRS, other than doing good, you know, if we do good land planning and good programming for our city, is really to understand a way that we can talk together, that we can come and have thorny issues that we discuss, but that we have a level of respect, that we have a common language and a common desire to make our city the best that it can be. And if we, if we only got out of it that measure of respect and civility and the ability to talk to one another, we've not, we've not always had that feeling in our city, and I think we will go a long way with just that, but we've got so much more to gain. So with that, I want to thank you all for being here tonight, and we look forward to continuing this discussion in the future in a number of different venues. So with that, we are going to, we are going to take about an eight-minute, maybe it's about a seven-minute, we'll be back around 8:15, to go into item number two, which will, I hope, be a great discussion on air bees and bees. So.
We will now move to agenda item number two, the short-term rental discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Starker, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was put on the agenda at City Council's request and the intent of tonight's discussion is really just an overview, kind of a short-term rental 101. We're not expecting a lot of deep diving into policy discussion this evening, but really just to give you an education on what short-term rentals are, what other cities are doing, what our current, our code currently talks about rentals and doesn't talk about short-term rentals specifically, but it does address them in different manners. And so Marian Schilling, our Assistant to the City Manager, and has taken the lead on this and with help from Ken and his staff in planning. So I will turn it over to Marian. You're starting it.
Thank you. As the City Manager said, I'm Marian Schilling, Assistant to the City Manager. I'm here tonight to talk about short-term rentals because they were part of the 2018-2019 Strategic Plan. So tonight, as a reminder, again, this is just a brief overview. We're just doing an introduction on the topic and then we'll be having time for questions and we'll just be looking for direction on how to move forward. So in general, short-term rentals are described as accommodations for the lodging of guests for less than 30 consecutive days in duration, and they can range from the rental of a single room or an entire dwelling unit. According to the website Host Compliance, there are about 140 active short-term rentals existing in City Wheat Ridge. And when you compare that to the number of households we have here, that's just about a little under 1% of the households in Wheat Ridge. On average, staff receives about three phone calls a month regarding how to become licensed as a short-term rental host, and we haven't had any formal complaints in the last year. So what is the city currently doing with this regulation? It does not specifically address short-term rentals in its code, but it's generally not permitted. So the reasons is because code does allow for the rooming and boarding in all residential districts. However, it's only for the maximum of two individuals for a period of not less than seven days. Additionally, code requires that to rent the entirety of a dwelling, it must be per a period of not less than 30 days. As part of the research, staff did a peer review of what our neighboring cities and counties were doing. We thought it would be good to get proactive, but also to find some real candid feedback from what other cities are experiencing. Of the 14 cities and counties that we reviewed, nine of them do currently regulate short-term rentals, and the other five either don't address them at all, or they explicitly ban them. And so what we found for, if we had to generalize, even though it's all over the place, we would say that for those that do enforce and do regulate short-term rentals, we're finding that short-term rentals are typically the primary residence, that they're requiring a business license and/or a short-term rental license. We're also seeing that they are requiring hosts to remit lodger's tax. Additionally, as part of the research, staff asked, really for general feedback, what was the process like, what are some lessons learned? And what we found is that it's really important to have adequate staff in order to administer and enforce any ordinance, and that would include any sort of online process as well. For example, the City of Fort Collins told me that they have, through their process, they use a third-party vendor. And in addition to that, they said they couldn't do it without that vendor, and they also have had to take on part-time hourly staff. So it's a big, it's a big ask for cities like Fort Collins. It's also, what we've heard is it's helpful to consider any sort of future scenario, what that might look like. So for example, one of the cities that I spoke to said that they tried to bring on regulations step by step, but in doing so, they didn't get all the information that they needed on the front end. So it ended up being more cumbersome because they had to keep coming back for more information that they didn't get right away. So they would, talked about being really deliberate and really thoughtful on the front end with enforcement, how it would roll out, what it would look like, and then what type of information you'd like to collect from hosts. Additionally, if primary residence was a requirement, cities have found that to be really mindful of the type of requirements that primary regulation would look like. So for example, they found that utility bills don't typically imply primary residency, but maybe voter registration and other types would. We also heard from the citizen survey, what our citizens think of short-term rentals. We found that generally supportive of collecting a lodger's tax. Citizens were net even about on whether or not there should be a limit on days that people could stay at a short-term rental. And another interesting point was that for renters, they preferred to have the option of renting an entire home, apartment, condo, while homeowners preferred that renters only be able to rent rooms while the hosts are present. So overall, very, overall snapshot of what's going on in the city, what's going on in our neighboring cities. So while we're not trying to go too deeply into policy tonight, what I'd like to do is just hear what everybody has to say about it, get some questions answered, and then get direction from council on how to move forward.
Thank you. Well, we will open this up for questions. And, oh, Ms. Davis, thank you so much. You know, I appreciate your courage. It's awfully hard to be the icebreaker.
Yeah, it is. I just lost my juice, but I know most, I, you know, I don't think I have to refer to anything. Thanks for the, the city comparisons. I think that's helpful. I would, I don't know that I have questions, but I just have comments. I think that obviously it's happening in our city. We know it's happening. I do support some type of regulation of this. And you know, what that looks like, you know, the Fort Collins model would be interesting to see if there's a third-party group that does that, because I think not only are we going to have to regulate, okay, did they get their business license, but we, someone's always going to have to go out there and look on VRBO or Airbnb and see, oh, is this house licensed with us? So it's, it's not going to be just, oh, here, I'm going to come take the license, thank you for coming in. It's also something that we're going to have to, in my opinion, reach out and make sure that all those folks that are already existing all of a sudden know, hey, guess what, you have to register and there, you know, there are going to be these fees and lodging taxes and that type of thing. So it is something I support. I, actually, we have one in our neighborhood. And I can, I have to mirror some of the public comment that I think some of the long-term rentals, or maybe not your best neighbor, I think we all have that scenario. You know, either, boy, I've got a messy homeowner next to me, which I don't if they are watching, or, for the record, I don't, or that's, I can tell that's a rental house, you know, because not all rental houses are ill-kept, not all, you know, so, you know, I don't want to, I guess I don't want to stereotype any type of home as not good or bad or processed. So I would mirror a lot of the feedback. I will say, my sister traveled all through Spain doing Airbnbs, and I've stayed in VRBOs as well. And I do think that, again, it draws in, you know, not necessarily vagrants and those types of things. So I do think it's something we should look into. I think it is something we can regulate, we should regulate. What that looks like, I think we need to be mindful of, because again, I sit and think, okay, how are we going to know if the primary residence, if somebody's living there? You know, how are we really going to know that? You know? And so I think those are the things that's difficult, because the honest people will do it right, and then if we don't have a way to regulate it, I think it's hard to set rules you can't really follow through on. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver?
I want to share some experiences, both as a personal person who uses Airbnb and as an Airbnb host. I have a family cabin up in the mountains, and, and in Grand County, they have been dealing with these same kinds of issues, because lots of people have second homes, everything else. And I'll start with the personal side. I think in a lot of times, you know, I, I lived in the Highlands before moving out to Wheat Ridge, and Airbnb didn't exist at that time. And, and I think it, I reflect a lot of the conversations that, of people who stood up tonight, because there are times, if you are a single homeowner, that you need to make extra money and cover things, but also when you live in a place like now Wheat Ridge, like I was living in the Highlands when home prices were, you know, doubling basically in the, in the 12 years that I lived there, it was one of the things that kind of pushed me out of being able to continue to stay in that neighborhood, because I didn't have an option, like keeping a, what was a more expensive house than I, you know, I could cash out of. And, and so I, I really, I connect with a lot of the things that were said, and I see that same thing happening in Wheat Ridge, as far as people who, who came to Wheat Ridge when it was very affordable. Now it's becoming less affordable, as we all know, which is, is great for everybody, but there are situations where it's, it's hard if, if you might be the only person in your house, or whatever situation. So I think that helps a lot. And as a host, I'd like to say I was, I've been a super host for five years. Something that if you haven't sort of had experience with Airbnb, is that it is a social media-based, as are all of them. I don't mean to just say Airbnb. You are not only creating rules, and, and since that's my experience, I'll use Airbnb as that experience, you're not only creating rules for every situation that we've talked about, as far as creating house rules, security, all of these different things. You're, you're not only trained by Airbnb, but there are also lots, there's lots of support involved, but you're being rated and also rating the people that stay. So when you do have problems, and you don't want to ever have that experience again, you have a way of, of calling it out. And you all could go on right now, as I think one of the people said, and you could see what my rating is, you could see everything about, except for the address, of what, what the situation is. So I think a lot of the, it's, it's shaming both ways, if there are problems, if that's, and it's amazingly effective, because I was very hesitant to do it initially. So, and then on the, on the city side, I, I was an early adopter with being a host back in, I think it was 2012 or something like that. And as people sort of learned about it, cities started to realize how many, at least Grand County did, how many people were doing this. And what they did is, and you probably found this too, is that a letter went out. They hired people to basically go through the sites and harvest all the, all the people that were doing this. And we got a letter that said, you need to get a tax license within a month, or, you know, you'll have to show it up to court. And I think, I don't know what the percentages were there, but it certainly made me say, oh, I didn't realize this. Okay, they've passed laws and, and you go and get a tax law. And I think it's, it's such a benefit for, for people. And, and you don't really realize it unless you sort of are in there, in that situation, that you both enjoy meeting people. I, I just think all of the, the positive things of Airbnb and the negative have been brought up in a really diverse way tonight. So I just wanted to reflect that I have personal experience with this, and, and I think, and I think the tax revenue that, that could be gained, because right now, we don't know what's happening, right? I, I think it could be a really great potential benefit.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Keter?
Let's piggyback a little bit on what Amanda said. So if I'm reading the chart right, it's Lakewood and Inglewood just forbid them?
If that's what the chart said.
Yes, so Lakewood recently took it to council, but they are, they opted to push it back, so they'll be addressing it later.
Okay. What about it? Is, so?
Inglewood is the same, so they're anticipating to address it in the next six months.
Okay, so there's, there's, there's nobody that, that just has a, has a ban on it, that just says, it has a ban in effect saying, these can't happen within our, within our borders. Okay. Because I tend to, my suspicions run with some of the, the public commenters that unless you were prepared to hire the same sort of staff that you would need to fully regulate it, that banning it and barring it is probably just not a feasible option, even if one were so inclined. And as a result, then I'm with, with Amanda, that it, just by ignoring it and letting it happen, we're both abdicating the opportunity to, to actually hold, take some control over the operations of it, and, and to realize the, the revenue that could arise from that.
Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I am in support of putting together some regulation and, and our, and having the Airbnbs pay our lodger's tax, and having them licensed. Kind of what I did is I went through the chart of what all of the cities do, and just kind of highlighted what I thought I liked that the cities were doing, and, you know, like, well, okay, cost-wise, that makes sense to me, you know, like, this municipality does, you know, their short-term license and an annual renewal for blank amount, or whatever. I, I wonder if, if we all think that, that it may, a tax and some regulation is, is in order, then maybe we look at what's been presented to us about our neighbors, and, and do some brainstorming, and then maybe we can send that back to staff, so that they can do some more work on it, but not basically with a blank slate of not knowing what our opinions are on, on some of the, you know, like, safety regulations. I personally said, you know, liked that Fort Collins does a self-certification of health and safety standards required before approval. Right? So, so I just kind of went down each little category and said, this is what I would like to see our policy look like. And so, that's just a suggest, I suggest that, you know, maybe we would do that, give them some direction so they're not just going back in empty-handed and blind.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate everybody that came in tonight to speak on this. And as we're discussing this, the concept of a tax or a fee is being thrown around, and, and by virtue of discussing a potential revenue from the city, that's a realization or acknowledgement of certain costs. And we've had quite a few people talk about the obvious benefits of developing the passive income relating to running out your home. And I think that, you know, in certain circumstances, that can be appropriate. But our job as a city isn't to look at necessarily all the benefits, it's to look at the costs and to understand what sort of impacts these operations are having, and how does that conform to code. And so to speak to Councilmember Hoppy's point about specifics regarding what we should do or what we can do around this, I would agree that a regulation of some kind or regulatory scheme should be developed, that an annual license and a renewal be appropriate. And the health and safety aspect, for me, I think is critical, in that as much as a homeowner takes on that liability of allowing someone to reside in their home, once we begin to license and regulate this, then we as a city are also on the hook of sorts, because we're permitting this to happen. And so if we're going to take on that responsibility, the, the health and safety of the guests in our city should be paramount, as much as they are for our hotel guests, that we want to make sure that the place they're residing is safe and healthy. So the regulation of that should take that into consideration. I'm undecided at this point regarding self-certification versus some type of city inspection, or some type of third-party inspection of the property. But there can be some discussion around what that health and safety aspect looks like. And then the other aspect regarding zoning, as it relates to these regulations, right now, our city code says rooming and boarding of not more than two persons is permitted in the residential property under the accessory use aspect. So when we talk about a family of five coming in, that's more than two. So what is the, is it a certain number of units that are allowed? Is it the number of people that are allowed? We have to kind of figure out what that looks like. But to the point of, should the homeowner occupy the premise at the same time that the guest does, I think that that would be an appropriate first step for the city to take, to, to enact rules around the fact that the property owner has to remain on the property while the guest is using that property. Because we can always amend that and change that down the road if what we're seeing is copacetic. But to start off the gate and allow what, what are currently, in some cases, a boarding house or a hostel of sorts, where you have bunk beds upon bunk beds in a, in a house, and being rented out for $20 a night, these types of facilities are in R1 neighborhoods, and I don't think that's in keeping with why people might choose an Airbnb in Wheat Ridge. The, the character of the neighborhood changes when you have flophouses and hostels in the neighborhood that are really against the zoning in the neighborhood. But because we allow short-term rentals now, they're somehow okay. So I think that a stair-step approach of taking it to require that the property owners reside in the property at the time the guest is there, would be a reasonable first step, at the same time requiring the licensing. And then as far as the, we all kind of focus on the revenue, but what about the, the actual regulation and the sort of adjudication of violations, and how does that get put forth? Is a property-specific address no longer allowed to be used as an Airbnb, or is that property owner no longer allowed to operate a, a short-term rental property? So I think there needs to be both So I think there needs to be both a personal license and a property license so that they're both regulated in different ways. And the process to adjudicate those cases also needs to be flushed out as well because how do we come to some sort of resolution or determination of violation if we don't have those baked into the process? So those are my concerns, and I'll be interested to hear what other people have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. I've spoken against Airbnbs and short-term rentals in the past, and I'm going to continue to speak against them. I'm a little confused. I thought we created zoning areas within our city to maintain order. In our neighborhoods, we have what we call residential neighborhoods, and those are for families to be able to move in and raise their families in a quiet, safe environment. We have commercial zones, and that is where people will build a hotel or similar institution and rent things out as a commercial endeavor. Why we want to put a commercial endeavor inside our residential neighborhoods, I'm not sure. Can I start a hardware store out of my garage? Probably not. Can I start, I've got a bunch of tools at home, can I start a mechanic's auto shop in my garage? I don't think so. What is, makes renting your room out to somebody that comes from another state not a commercial venture? So A, is it a business? I think it is. So B, when they call up and say they want to start an Airbnb, do we ask them for a business license, or do we just ignore it? As far as it being too hard? Well, I'm to enforce. Well, I'm sure Chief Brennan would love to have a drug dealer put an ad on the internet that says, "Hey, I'm going to be on the corner of 44th and Wasworth next week selling drugs." It'd be awfully easy to find him. We have a map here that says we have 140 STRs in the city, and it shows where they are. So this idea of it's too hard, I don't understand. We also have codes. We have a code right now for bed and breakfast rooms, which in Airbnb is a bed and breakfast. Why aren't we enforcing it? It says it's a subordinate use of a one-family dwelling which offers sleeping rooms for overnight transient occupancy. That's an Airbnb, which by the way stands for air, bed, and breakfast. The guy started it in San Francisco when they put an air mattress on the floor in their apartment and rented it out. It was an airbed and breakfast. And when they got commercial and grew, they changed it to Airbnb. We have lodger's tax, lodging services, that includes bed and breakfast residents. We already have a code on that. Why aren't we enforcing it? We also have one for boarding and rooming homes. But what I'm saying is, we say we've got to have so many onsite parking spaces, we already have codes for it. And it baffles me why we're not enforcing these codes that already exist. And I can see by the count, I can do a house count tonight, I'm sure I'm going to get voted down in the long run when I say we should ban them entirely. But why aren't we even enforcing the rules that we have? Because it's too hard? Well, if we were enforcing these and making them get a business license and collecting lodger's tax and doing all the other things, our, we could cover our costs to put somebody on this part-time or full-time if we had to. But just ignoring it for however long we've been doing it, when we know where they're operating out of, which address? We know that there are people there, here's one I just pulled down, it was the first one on the list. This guy has an apartment, he doesn't live there. It's a commercial enterprise. And, I mean, you just have to turn on the internet to find out where they're at. Why do we allow this to go on right now? I am all for studying it at more in-depth, and so I'm going to sign off now. But there are issues that we should take a look at. This is something that came off the internet. The problem, save San Diego neighborhoods, and it's about short-term rentals and how they've ruined neighborhoods. It's not all positive. And as one lady even said, if she's not onsite, they steal everything out of the place. Is that what we want in our neighborhoods? And I still get back to ask yourself the basic questions. What is a residential neighborhood for versus a commercial neighborhood? And isn't that our basic job is to protect our codes and our neighbors? And I got to ask another question that we need to ask. If someone comes in and rents a room, even if the owner lives onsite and brings in three people, is that now an R2 use of an R1 house? I don't know. Are we going to turn our blind eye to it? So I hope, we do, I understand we do need to go further and discuss this more, and I'm all for that. But this part just baffles me that we just turn a blind eye when people call us up and say, "What do I need to get a license?" And we just say, "Oh, nothing. We're just ignoring you."
Mr. Matthews, that's not necessarily the case.
How many tax dollars do we collect on Airbnbs right now?
We don't.
Okay, then we ignore them.
Because our code does not allow them, Mr. Matthews.
Yes, it does.
No, it allows Airbnb, it allows short-term stays, as Mr. Johnson or Mary Ann explained.
What's a bed and breakfast?
As Eric mentioned earlier in our previous discussion, it depends, Larry. Our code is not specific on everything, and it depends in this situation. We don't have specific codes that address short-term rentals as they are today. And that's why we're asking for this direction. And that's why, and it's on City Council's policy list of an item to discuss, so that's why it's in front of you this evening. We're not going to go out and enforce this until we get a direction. That's why we're not enforcing this, not because it's too hard.
What is a bed and breakfast?
It's defined in our, it's probably defined in our code, yes, bed and breakfast defined in our code, but that's not the same as short-term rental, Mr. Matthews.
But we're including all of these in short-term rentals.
There's differences. We're not going to regulate something until we get further direction from City Council.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hoppe.
Yes, I think it's important that we do regulate these, but as we're thinking about what we feel like is important to us, when we're thinking about regulations, I would hope that we would keep in mind that a residential area is not just for families, people to move in and have babies and raise them. That's not a residential area. I have family members who are married, they're in their 50s, they own several businesses, they have no children. They didn't move into their residential area just so they could raise families. So I completely disagree with that, with that description of what a residential area is. I also think that, yeah, part of it is, there is a manpower issue. That's why all of our, you know, we do have a lot of codes, and we do say our zoning and code enforcement is important to us, and there are some that filter to the top and some that fall to the bottom. There's ones that are very more obvious egregious and some that really aren't. And so that's why I would say that that's probably a lot of part of, we don't really have the manpower. And then just one note that I had noticed, I know that Mr. Urban brought up an important point, that we don't necessarily want someone to empty out their house and throw a bunch of bunk beds in it and be renting a hostel in it. And so like, one thing that I had noticed is in Manitou Springs, their occupation regulations is that individual rooms may not be rented unless the property owner resides there. And so that would be one thing, you know, it's either you rent a room with a host that lives there, or you rent the house as the one person renting the house for the few days that you have your family in the neighborhood. And so I would just really encourage us to look at some of this stuff, look at how we want our regulations to be crafted and get some of that information back to city staff. Rather than us having to like hammer it all out tonight, we can all thoughtfully sit down and think of how would we like our regulations to look, send it to staff, they can compile it and come back to us with suggestions.
Thank you, Mr. Pond.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Hoppe, and I will support consensus to that effect if she wants to make it. But I think, I think we're starting to get closer incrementally to something that makes sense. We still have a lot of discussion, but we've had, I think, citizen surveys. We obviously got some input just recently with, from our consultants and from the NRS committee. I think seeing this packet, and thank you for putting that together, because I think seeing this information and understanding the matrix of all the things that can be considered or should be considered and how to do it is a really good start. There's, I do agree that we should be, you know, thinking about how to appropriately manage this and regulate it. And, you know, I definitely understand the concern, you know, that we don't want to degrade our neighborhoods. So I'll leave it at that. I don't want to degrade our neighborhoods either. And I don't, I think if we, I don't think this leads to that if, you know, from the input that we've heard and from some of the opportunities that we have to regulate it, it does not absolutely always, or in any of these versions, drive towards a degradation of neighborhoods as we know them today.
Thank you. Ms. Davis.
So I just have a quick follow-up. So I just kind of want to go, kind of go through some comments because I do think, you know, I hear what Mr. Matthews is saying about it being a neighborhood and why are we having businesses in neighborhoods. I see, you know, I hear that, but we do have residential homes in, or, you know, home...
Group homes.
Well, yeah, group homes in neighborhoods. And I think, in fact, if anything, I've gotten more complaints on that than other things. And again, I do think if it's done right with any one thing, it's possible. But again, I, you know, Airbnbs, I don't think I've ever heard hostels, youth hostels and Airbnbs put together or flop houses. But I do think it's something to look at as we're doing the regulation. If it's a two-bedroom, two-bath house and it says it sleeps 12, then I think, you know, somehow we need to look at, and, you know, I don't know if that's all part of the process, but we need to look at that to make sure someone's not putting, you know, four bunk beds in every room and those types of things. So I think that there are ways to do it that's done well. I think it kind of does go back to what Ms. Weaver had said about, you know, it kind of manages itself as far as, you know, if somebody walked in and they were sharing a room with six other people they didn't know, you know, you're going to hear about it. And I think that, you know, society's not, it's not what people are looking for. But I think that, I think there's ways to do it. It goes back to, I do think it's discussion points about how we do it and what's best for our neighborhoods and to keep our neighborhoods, you know, neighborhoods and also allow that. Because the other thing, and I'm going to go back to that San Francisco conference, was affordable housing, and this was another thing they brought up. You know, that a lot of Airbnb folks are older, older folks, that it helps with their income because now their income is limited. And it kind of goes back to also, you know, the possibility of just giving that person company and those types of things because I think those are the things that oftentimes this dynamic brings. So I do think it's something that we should study. Again, I think we have pros and cons about a lot of it, but I think if done right, we could do something.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question I have for city staff is, does the city of Wheat Ridge currently have any operating bed and breakfasts at the present time?
We do not.
And do we have any other kind of, like, in the code, it mentions a boarding house or a boardroom, separate and different. How many of those do we have, or what's...
I don't know on that. The reason I answer the question the way I did, Mr. Matthews, is that they require approval of a special use permit, and we've not approved any special use permits. So we do not have any licensed bed and breakfasts. In terms of rooming and boarding houses, we don't separately license them, so I wouldn't know.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hoppe.
Great, I'm going to try to move forward with the consensus.
Wait, are you going to a consensus?
I was going to try, yep.
I'd like to say something before you do, if I might. I think you need to sort of step back and say, in the overall, this is really a balancing of private property rights, community property rights, and the rights that a lodger would have when they come in. I hear Mr. Matthews' argument clearly about what we do with our, in our residential property. But I think we allow accountants, we allow therapists to have people come into their home and do counseling sessions. There's a number of home occupations that you can do in your residence that are not disallowed. And those have been balanced by the community values, and I assume somewhere along the line, we decided what the parking ratios and the parking requirements were going to be, how intrusive that could be in your residence, whether you were living in your residence, and balance those rights together. When I look at this, I think if you look at the personal property rights, that people should be able to, in their home that they live in, have a lodger. I think it's pretty logical. When you don't live in that home and you have a lodger living there, then you become more of just a short-term rental property in your neighborhood, and I don't think that's really good for our neighbors. We have more rental property in our community than we probably should have. And I think to the extent that we can foster homeownership and homeowner-occupied housing, the better off we are. If you look at the community value, I think the community has an interest in how much parking is, how parking for this type of use is maintained, whether it's on the property or whether it's just going to be shared, community parking that's on the street, that can be a detriment. So I think you need, we need to talk about parking and how you park these occupations and these things. When you talk about what the community value is on what it costs us to operate this program and how will we recover the fees and the costs that it takes our city to be able to do this? Because there's, there are, you know, I think, and to sort of segue from that into an issue that I think is really important that Mr. Urban brought up, is the safety of the patron that's going to occupy this. I can't ima, you know, I can certainly imagine someone having a room or two in the basement that would make great, that would make great income property. And oh, yes, you can go down to the basement, and I've got a little bathroom down there, so you've got a basement and a bathroom down there, but do you have an egress window? So if there should be a problem, a fire issue, we wouldn't let a homeowner let their children sleep down there without an egress window. And I think we would not let, we would not want to have this situation unless it was up to the codes, the building codes that we require for life safety in our residential properties. You know, and, you know, so I guess kind of to go back on it, I think Ms. Hoppe had a good solution, and I went through and sort of ticked off on here, well, I think, you know, I think Fort Collins is doing it right here and Manitou Springs has got it here. But I think when we start to look at what are the larger, the larger things that we need to, the questions we need to answer before we go in and do this, and I think she is probably going to come up with a consensus that talks about us doing that. So with that, I will yield the floor to Ms. Hoppe. Thank you.
If I may, Ms. Hoppe, I think I know what you're going to say, but maybe I would suggest that we provide some type of survey back to council that, so that we get consistent information back on different types of regulations so that you can all answer it and provide your information back on a common form. Would that work?
Does that work for everybody? Yes, thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
To inform your motion perhaps, but two questions. You know, often when we contemplate fairly significant code change, I use EDUs as an example. Back in early 2016, you know, we did a series of three public outreach meetings to kind of inform the recommendations of an ordinance. Council ultimately didn't decide to move forward at that time, but that was what we brought to council. So question, would that be something that would be desired? And then the second question on a similar line is, I guess, timing. We've long, the message has long been on EDUs and short-term rentals that, "We'll figure that out when the NRS update is done." And I think you heard a little bit in the document from CEB that it will have some information pertaining to short-term rentals. I'm not trying to kick the can down the road by any stretch, but just want to understand whether we should be moving forward, you know, toot sweet, or whether we should be, you know, waiting for whatever recommendations come out of that policy document.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a text message from a resident last week and said, "What's the city doing about Airbnb?" week and said, uh, what's the city doing about Airbnbs? I said, oh, we're having a study session on Monday night on it. Oh, and had no clue that that was happening, but had that interest and lived across the street from an Airbnb and had some concerns and wanted to know, uh, what, where, where was the city on this? And so, uh, I think it's important to reach out to the current operators of short-term rentals to understand where they're coming from, those that were aware and, uh, paused Netflix to talk about what I said earlier, enough to see what was going on, uh, that they're here tonight to speak their piece. But, uh, we didn't necessarily send a direct notification out to interested parties about, uh, this evening's discussion. And like, as you mentioned, it's not necessarily to get into the weeds on it, but I think notifying the current owners of short-term rentals and their adjacent neighbors that we're discussing this, to hear directly from those that are benefiting from this and those that may or may not be impacted by this, to get a, a survey done of the adjacent property owners to short-term rentals to understand, are, are there impacts that we don't know about that, that are, uh, of both the short-term rental owners and their adjacent neighbors, to fully understand the impacts before we get into a regulatory scheme.
Ms. Davis?
Can I ask a question that kinda goes along with the ADU and the short-term rentals? Do we, if I was, if I had a home and I had to rent and then I was just renting it, like long-term, is there any kind of business permit for that or any kind of requirement for that? I mean, I think that goes back to, you know, when we were talking about, you know, doing the safety checks. But then we were talking about larger buildings. We weren't talking about the homes. But, you know, I, I just kinda sit and I think, parking, okay? So I can think of some rentals in our neighborhood who have an excessive amount of work trucks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I can think of, you know, a regular homeowner that has three teenagers and their four friends and the seven cars, you know? So I, I think, I mean, I guess my question would be, and I don't know if they're, if you guys are like Christie, that's, you know, another day. But it, you know, short-term rentals versus rentals, I mean, I, I think a lot of it is going back to the responsibility of the homeowner. And, and to me, and the respect for your neighbors. Like, if you're gonna own that home, you're gonna respect that I'm living next to you as a, you know, not present owner and that there are certain things you're gonna do. So I, I kinda hate to say it, but I almost wanna fold rentals into this because, and I don't, again, I don't know how you can do that, but I, I think that they need to be held to similar standards. If we're gonna have like parking standards and things like that of short-term rentals, why aren't we having some of that of long-term rentals?
That would be our rental inspection program that we've been talking about for years.
Right. But I'm gonna tell ya, I, I, I disagree with you, Patrick, because the rental inspection program did not do houses. Because that was my issue from beginning. It was more-
That was an option.
Four or five property buildings. It was more the bigger buildings. And it's like, I think some of the houses are-
Well, we took it down to single-family and we were told, no, don't touch single-family. And then, and then we went up, we, we kept going up to a level that was comfortable with that current council at that time. And, and, and we never got to a, an consensus. So-
Yes.
Those were discussed.
It's hard, you know, because, I don't know, it, you see it, again, it's, it's, you can have good homeowners and bad homeowners, good renters and bad renters. It's just difficult.
Mr. Keter?
This kinda jumps off of Ms., sorry, thank you. Uh, this jumps off, uh, Mr. Urban's comments, but, uh, um, and probably won't go as far as he was hoping, but it sounded from ZB, CBZ that the, the neighborhood survey can be broken down geographically or at least by council district. Um, looking at the map, um, it's not surprising that, that there seems to be more concentration of existing, uh, short-term rentals the closer you get to the Denver City Center. And to the extent that, uh, that it's not too dramatically, uh, much more effort, I would be interested to see whether there's any statistical kind of breakdown as to people's overall attitudes about, I know you didn't ask that question, but, but by the policies, you may be able to get some information whether, whether people who are actually in neighborhoods that are, that where the larger concentrations are have either more or less concerns about, uh, about their regulation as a whole.
Ms. Weaver?
Um, I think we just need to be really careful, uh, to go back to something Ms. Hoppe said, uh, not to be discriminatory. Because me, as a single person in my house, I have one car in my driveway at any one time. And if I had an Airbnb person, I would have one other car in my driveway at that one time. And I know many people with large families and teenagers that have five and six cars. And currently, that is dictated by code, um, for certain amounts of vehicles and where they can be. And, and I, I think we have pretty good code, as I understand it, um, having been on the other side of that at the farm sometimes, uh, of general residential code rules for where those vehicles can be and where they can be parked and, um, things like that. And so I, I, if we're gonna start dictating, uh, the, the, the safety and the parking and all of these things, I, I think we have to be really careful to not venture into, um, the, the demographic of why we're doing that. Does that make any sense? Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, to Councilmember Davis's questions regarding the rental inspection program, uh, I think where the differentiation between these two issues is, is in the intensity of use, the frequency of use, and the unfamiliarity of the guest in that particular property or neighborhood and, and the interactions and the, the change, uh, that occurs by having different people in there, uh, quite frequently versus one tenant that's there for a full year. And so I, I think that as it relates to this short-term rental program, to get a regulatory scheme wrapped around this and see how that goes would be a more appropriate sort of first step than to try-
I'm not doubting you.
Yeah.
I'm just saying it's hard. It's kind of a fine line.
Right. And so I, I think that, uh, all rentals are at the mercy of their landlord. If you've got a great landlord, then everything's copacetic. But if it, but if you have an absentee landlord, a landlord that isn't there, uh, going back to, uh, the mayor's comments regarding home occupations, uh, the accountant doesn't open the door and hand you the calculator and he goes off, you know, somewhere else. He, he's there working with you. And same thing with the therapist. They're, they don't just let you lay on their couch and figure it out yourself. They're actually there working with you. And so I think that in that same spirit and in that same vein, in order to keep that residential character there, that, uh, property owner needs to be present for that experience. And that, uh, I think that would sort of, uh, uh, subside some of the concerns that people have about unknown, uh, persons coming into the neighborhood. And it, there's sort of a litmus test. Is, if I would be willing to, uh, spend the night in the same house as you, then I, I think you're an okay character. But i- if you're not, then, then that doesn't happen. So I think that there's that kind of, uh, filter for, uh, the, the individuals that might be coming into a neighborhood by way of that property owner making that decision, that I feel comfortable taking this person in as a guest in my home. And my sister runs a, uh, an Airbnb out of her house. She stays there, uh, during the, the nights that the person's there. She never leaves. So, uh, she doesn't live in Colorado. But in that, uh, in that instance, I, I think it's an important, uh, important litmus, uh, litmus test to, uh, the type of person that, that's coming in to be a guest in someone's home. The other thing that I think is important is that the actual property owner, uh, be involved in the licensing or the, uh, the interaction with the city and that it shouldn't be allowed where a tenant can set up an Airbnb in a property. While Airbnb might work through the landlord and, uh, the property owner and get a consent from them, I think it's important for us as a city to be working directly with that property owner so that it's not just a tenant in that, uh, unit that's residing there, that it's the actual property owner. So, uh, those are my thoughts.
Uh, Ms. Hoppe?
I mean, I, I guess, we have a consensus to, to get a, a survey out to us, asking kind of what we want our policy to look at. And so, um, I, I guess I would, uh, just ask that when, you know, when it come, when the survey comes to you, like, of course, it doesn't have to be something that's already on here. So if you come up with something different, then, you know, put that on the survey. And, um, you know, things like parking cars. One thing I would like to mention though is that if I buy a home, nobody tells me how many cars I can park on the street. So there, you know, so why are we saying that renters are, are less than homeowner? I'm just saying, like, you know, like, we, why would we regulate a home that's rented next to me, um, and say, you have four cars and it's more cars than I like to look at, but, and you don't own the home, so get rid of your car. You know, so I think that we just gotta be real careful when we go kinda into that place, you know?
I agree. Or your garage is full of stuff, so you can't park your cars in your garage. I mean, we don't do that.
We don't park cars in garages at my house. That's not what they're for.
All right. Do we, um, do we then have a consensus to have staff put together some of the options, the regulatory options, if you will, based upon some of the surveys that we've had and, and get that back to us? And then I think to, to Mr. Urban's point, that we let the word go forth from this time forward, that this is under, this is under discussion.
And also the timing question. Do you wanna, do you wanna wait for some more of the NRS to be completed? Wait for after the retreat or when next available?
I would prefer in the short term versus the long term.
Ms. Hoppe?
Yeah, I, I agree with, um, with Zach on the short term to long term. But I guess something that was just put out there that I don't know if we got a consensus on is, do we send out a letter or, you know, do we ask staff to move forward, have another study session about it? And, um, in that, you know, and try to get the word out at that study session to the current operating 140 for them to be at that study session? So do we have a consensus just for that, that we ask staff to move forward to look at regulation? We're gonna move it to another study session? On our way to that other study session, we'll reach out to the current 140 to be able to come to be a part of that study session? Well, and, and this might, I guess my question is, and this might complicate things too much, but I guess, you know, you can talk about the 140 that are on the list, but, you know, I guess the question would be, what about their neighbors? Cause that's where you might get feedback of, oh my goodness, no, I, I think this is the best thing in the world. Or you might get feedback of, oh my gosh, holy nightmare. You know? So I, I mean, I think it'd be hard to do that, but you almost want a, you know, 360 kind of feedback. Right. I guess what I was thinking more of is, we have feedback from the residents that say to apply the city license to rent their property, 48% support it. Like, we have the feedback from that, but what we don't have feedback from is maybe the people who operate it, who say, um, who would then come in during citizen, uh, comment on agenda items and say, um, I saw in your memo that you guys are looking at, um, requiring four parking spaces per one person who rents, and I don't think that's good. So that's, that's more like what I was thinking about. Right. And, and, and I hear you on that, but I don't think that we know if that 48% live next to a Airbnb. So you don't know. I mean, it could be me. It's, it's kinda like that NIMBYs. Yeah, you can do it, but not my backyard or my front yard or whatever. So you don't know if that 48% actually live next to one. But I would agree with, hey, these are, these are things we're considering.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll withdraw my request for consensus if somebody would like to come up with something different, with a different plan then.
No, I think it's good.
Just include the neighbors?
Yeah.
Each, house on each side or?
I guess the only inclusion, uh, as, uh, Mr. Goff said, that the survey out to the operators of short-term rentals include the immediately adjacent property owners, front, back, left, right, catty corner, what have you, uh, of the existing short-term rentals to fully vet this issue. And, and thi- this process, I think, to Councilmember Weaver's, uh, point about Grand County sending her a letter, I think just by the simple fact of sending these individuals a letter saying the city is considering, uh, these regulations will, uh, sort of put them on notice that we want to make sure this is done right. And, uh, to borrow from Mr. Matthews' quote, uh, "We're from the government and we're here to help." Uh, so I think that, uh, it's something that, uh, just by sending them a letter and saying this is what we're considering, will put them on notice and, and help them, help us, help us craft this language. But we can't do that without the adjacent property owners being aware and having a voice in the process.
So you're, so you're talking about sending a letter out to all the people that, that purportedly this 140 Airbnbs and the people and their neighbors? And is it, is it not, is it not reasonable that we have public information officers and newspapers and, and other ways to, to generate public interest? What about the people that don't, aren't next to an Airbnb, but might be if it goes into, into service? I mean, they're-
I think it speaks to the, uh, the experience and the interactions that these neighbors have had with this particular issue. And that, uh, the, the general notification of meetings and whatnot, uh, is for matters of general concern, whereas this is a specific concern that directly impacts the immediately adjacent neighbors. And so I think in this instance, that's why we would want to encourage participation by those that have either greatly benefited or have greatly, uh, at some great cost because of what's currently operating. So that's why I would encourage us to, and I'll make a consensus, to send a survey out to the adjacent-
Send a letter out.
Send a letter out by, uh, uh, not a survey, but a, a letter out regarding the study session to provide their, uh, feedback to us. Uh, so let me, sorry, let me start over and just make a consensus to invite the adjacent property owners of short-term rentals to attend the city council study session where we'll be discussing this issue.
And the host?
Oh, yeah, and, and the host, yes, sorry. And the host.
If I, if I might just, we don't have that data. Uh, we'd have to buy that data from one of the, the, the firms like Host Compliance. So I don't know what that number is, but probably between five and 10 grand, I'm guessing, to get that data.
Fifty-seven hundred.
Sixty-seven hundred. Thanks, Mary. Mr. Pond?
So, I understand the, the, the desire, and I'm not saying no to it, but I don't know that we need to say yes to it tonight. Um, I'm, uh, so I wanna answer, I wanna come back to that in a second by answering kinda how this plays out with the NRS. I'm, I'm oka, I mean, I think we, we got a little bit of picture from the, the NRS about where this falls or doesn't fall. To me, that is detached, it creates a detachment that's acceptable for us to, to move down, uh, you know, and can, and talk about this. So that's, that just answers the question, I think, that has been raised a couple of times about how does this fall in, in, you know, do we wait on the NRS to, to kind of fully form? I don't know that we, that we have to, um, to take the steps that we're talking about. So I, I still agree with the previous consensus to try to kinda get this, um, pulled together in a survey format to, to us that helps us try to get clarity on some of the regulatory framework inside of, you know, survey matrix, et cetera. Um, ultimately, I think that should de- develop into a study session that we, that, that then we notify whether we buy data or notify in some other way, more traditional way, to try to bring people out, um, that we create that notification and be very specific about what that agenda is and what we're gonna be talking about. But I don't know that we have to kind of set that date tonight or, um, or, um, kind of, um, be specific about, about, about that communication. To me, taking the step to say, we can walk down this path, it doesn't have to be tethered exactly to the NRS, and we can start walking by, down it by reacting to this information tonight in a survey format to ourselves. And that we all generally, or some of us have the intent of communicating more robustly to hosts and affected parties as we get further to setting a, a date to talk about this again. And, and, and not be any more specific right now, tonight. That'd be my suggestion.
Thoughts on that, Mr. Urban?
Well, I, yeah, I agree that each of us should reach out to those affected and, and try to, uh, garner a, a better idea about what's happening. And I think that, um, my whole intention in desiring those specific individuals to attend is to inform our policy as we move forward because they have the most experience, both the proprietors and the, the neighbors to the establishments, that they have the most experience. And, and how does this, uh, framework or the, the short-term rental experience operate within the city of Wheat Ridge? What, what are the unique challenges to our city? So that's why I would want to make the most informed decision, to have the most affected people in the room helping us, uh, through that discussion. And, and obviously, uh, the, the individual property owners should, you know, should be aware of this. The idea that the data does not exist or that we have, if we have to pay somebody for the data, that means the data already exists somewhere. And I, I understand that there's a cost to that, but there's also a cost of not doing anything about this. So I, I would spend a little bit of time thinking about how can the city, uh, garner this information, uh, away from pay for, paying for it, uh, and as well as understanding- Uh, and as well as understanding, um, that at some point, we're gonna need this data. So it'd be better to get it now versus later because I, I believe councils, uh, of the impression that this is a policy that we should move forward with, with regard to regulating short-term rentals. So we will need that data at some point, why not get it now?
Isn't this something we can kinda slow walk, though? We've got, we've got a, you know, a retreat planned for this, for in April. We've got the NRS report coming out a month or two after that. I think, I think we're sort of on a good track to kinda get some information, be able to sort of, you know, we've got some information tonight. If we give feedback to staff, they can go do more inquiries about, about all of the things that we've talked about. And in, including how, what sort of a, what sort of and what, how robust a, a sort of a public outreach? Because I think we should have a robust public outreach, but I, I, I don't, I don't see that we need to rush right into this now. I think we, I think we could sort of slow walk it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's exactly, I should've said just that, that was perfect. Cause that's, I think we, we, we don't have to be as fast, and that doesn't dismiss anything. I, I don't disagree with what the intention or what you're saying at all. I just, I just think we can be a little bit paced about it, so I don't want you to think that I'm dismissing kind of the intent of getting out there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would say that, uh, slow walking gives you a chance to look around and understand what's going on. And as well as time to become prepared to deal with this. I haven't heard any objections to regulating short-term rentals. And, uh, given that, I would like to make a consensus to, uh, ask city staff to compile a list of properties that are suspected to, uh, operate a, a short-term rental at the present time because that is going to inform our decision, one way or the other. And if we want to regulate them, we have to know where they are, and it's better to know that now than, uh, after we decide how and what to, you know? Is the hundred and forty number correct, or do we have, uh, fourteen hundred, or do we have fourteen?
You're saying buy the data?
Buy the data or, or get it in some other way that the, uh, you, you can identify all rentals in the city by identifying the property owners at a different address than the, uh, property itself. That doesn't tell you the short-term rental aspect of it, but that narrows it down. Uh, there's other, I, I would say that taking time to think about it, you know, obviously buying it would be, uh, more expedient. And we'd have to trust that that information is valid, but, uh, I would say that that would be the most expedient way to do it, so I would say...
It's gonna be the most expedient and the most valid. Um, there, there's probably fifty-five different platforms out there that staff would have to search to find these properties, and, um, we don't have the capacity to do that right now. Um, if, if, if this is information you want post-taste, I, I would suggest that we purchase the data.
But in my understanding, the city staff has used sites like Zillow and others to identify ADUs in the past. So it's something that's been done in the past regarding ADUs.
Not with short-term rentals, it's a different, it's a different animal.
Right.
It's a much different animal.
So I, I would make a consensus that the city purchase the data regarding the short-term rentals. We're gonna need it regardless.
Consensus fails.
I mean, I don't, I don't think that, like we were saying, that that could eventually happen.
You know?
This affect you as a neighbor, those types of things. So I don't think any of us are saying that we wouldn't eventually do it. It's just, I don't know that we have to be a, a decision tonight.
Fair enough. Does that conclude our discussion on STRs? Uh, Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank you for your summaries. Uh, you did, I think, in a concise but yet thorough summary of the issues and helped clarify issues. And you've done that before on other issues, and I think you do a really excellent job of that, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Just, just to be clear, there was really only one consensus that passed, and that was to have staff do survey the council about what aspects of this they, they want to regulate. Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you very much for a good discussion. I think we've got some more, um, some more work to do on that issue, but I think it'll be really interesting to us and our citizens. We then are going to, uh, go to Agenda Item Number Three, which is a bub, a budget supplemental for Porchlight Family Justice Center. Chief? Do you have, do you have a brief PowerPoint on this, or?
Nine thirty at night, that hurts. You don't know what I've been through just to, just to get to this point.
Well, thank you for joining us.
But you've been here with me, so, so good evening. I'm gonna keep this, uh, I'm gonna keep this short and brief. So, uh, you have a staff report before you requesting an eighteen thousand dollar budget supplemental, uh, from, uh, the Family Justice Center, Porchlight, as it's now being called in Jefferson County. I think you'll all recall from the two presentations that have been done in the past in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen that, uh, the Family Justice Center, uh, was, uh, sort of a vision of our current district attorney, Pete Ware. There's certainly, um, uh, there's certainly a lot of thought and logic goes behind, uh, family justice centers. Uh, they, uh, uh, and I should say, the district attorney at a law enforcement executive meeting on the first, uh, first of March made a request of all of the law enforcement agencies and cities and county to, uh, to help close the gap that they have to, uh, open, uh, Porchlight, uh, in, uh, two thousand and nineteen. And that, uh, that amounts approximately three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That will allow them to get to their one point two million dollar goal of, uh, of funding to, uh, to open Porchlight. Uh, we've always known and suspected that, uh, at some point, there would be a request that would come from, uh, from Porchlight from, uh, from municipalities and for the county to, uh, to pay. That's not unusual. We do that with quite a, a few other multi-agency, uh, uh, type ventures in Jefferson County that provide a broader level of service. Uh, the Ralston House, uh, is, is a good example of that. Uh, we, uh, we contribute about ten thousand dollars a year to the Ralston House. They do all our forensic interviews for kids. Uh, the Juvenile Assessment Center, uh, the Detox Center, uh, the, uh, Joint Adams County Jeffco Hazmat, uh, Group, Foothills Animal Shelters. Uh, these are, these are all entities that provide a, uh, a service that all of our, our communities need. So in two thousand, in, in the two thousand and eighteen, uh, presentation to council, uh, I think one of you asked if there was gonna be a funding request coming forward for, for Porchlight. And at that time, they weren't, uh, in a position to make that. They were still submitting for grants, still doing, uh, fundraising on their own. Uh, this request has come up. Uh, the DA had asked, uh, in a phone conversation that I had with him, asked for some sort of decision, an idea of whether or not Wheat Ridge would fund at this eighteen thousand dollar level. Uh, because they, uh, in April, they need to make a decision, are they moving forward with, uh, with Porchlight or, or not? So, uh, the methodology they used to come up with, uh, uh, this funding request was really based on, on a couple of factors. One is the city of Golden already made a ten thousand dollar contribution to Porchlight without being asked. Uh, so they looked at their three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar shortfall at this point in terms of getting it open and, uh, did a percentage calculation based on population. So that's how they came up with the eighteen thousand dollars for, uh, for Wheat Ridge. I don't have that in my budget this year. Wasn't something that, uh, we had planned on, on budgeting for. Uh, Porchlight, representatives from Porchlight, uh, we will be present, uh, if this comes forward on April eighth, certainly to ask any questions of, of council. But I would be happy to entertain any questions that I can answer tonight, so.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, questions for Chief Brennan? Ms. Davis?
So I just have a question, cause I know we were talking earlier about other support services that are for our community that we've shared with, um, either other cities or the county and, you know, set up like intergovernmental agreements and, and those types of things. Is there a reason why they're not gonna do that, or is that also to follow? Is this a one-time, um, donation? Or is this gonna be like, well, we're gonna probably be asking this every year? And should we not create some type of commitment with all of the cities to make sure that everyone's pulling their weight?
Right. So great, uh, great question. Um, so a couple of things. Uh, one is, is I suspect like some of the other service, uh, provisions that we have, like with Ralston House as an example, we will have a, an annual commitment to make. Uh, there are still a lot of things to be so, be decided with Porchlight. Uh, one of those is whether or not we'll house a detective at Porchlight. Uh, you know, the idea with Porchlight is to take all of the services that a victim of domestic violence or some other person's related crime might need and have it in one location, and that location has been identified, there's a lease for that location. So Lakewood's already committed a team of detectives. Uh, their domestic violence, uh, family unit will be there. Jefferson County's made a similar commitment in terms of housing, uh, people there. So there still are, are a lot of things that have to be worked through as well as, uh, an intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement. So this request is, is strictly to help get them to the one point two million dollar level. And I'm sure at some point, either this year or in early twenty twenty, we'll, we'll have some, uh, form of an IGA or a memorandum of understanding that'll exist.
Uh, Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. Um, and a little bit along the lines of what, uh, Christie was talking about there as far as is this a one-time deal or is there gonna be ongoing expenses? I tried, when I got this, I tried to open on their business plan, and of course, it was just a piece of paper, just a picture, a JPEG. But I have a question, uh, not only about the long-term funding, but what I'm understanding is we're taking services that our people are going to right now and bringing them all into one place. Who's paying for what budgets are supporting the services they're getting right now, where they have to go to six different places to get them? And how does, how do those budget items relate to bringing this all together?
Right. So, so, uh, you know, a good question. So the idea is, is the cost of services, uh, currently, you know, exist, you know, with human services, with different law enforcement entities, uh, with the district attorney's office, with social services, uh, you know, with therapists, with, with counseling, all of those things, uh, uh, that, that a victim of domestic violence might go through. The issue and the reason for Family Justice Center is oftentimes victims don't access all of those services because they're all located in different areas of the county or the, or the metro area. So the idea is to bring those and house those services there. So for instance, if we, uh, decided to put a detective there, we would pay the detective salary as, as an entity. But there are services, there's, uh, there's a lease service, there are utility bills, there are those kinds of things that, uh, you know, right now, we house people here. Now we'd, we'd be housing somebody in a, in another facility. So it's those kinds of costs that, uh, they're related to opening a center like, like, like that. Uh, there might be some medical, uh, costs associated with that. Uh, ther- therapy costs right now that, uh, are done, uh, uh, you know, that the victim pays for that now this, this entity might be able to provide for those that don't take advantage of that because they don't have, you know, uh, the ability to pay for those kinds of services.
I, I understand. I'm not sure if we're not kinda whizzing past each other a little bit there. I can understand that because they're acquiring a facility where before they were housed in different facilities that were maybe just an office here and an office there, there may be more upfront costs. But for instance, you mentioned they go to human services to get assistance of some kind. Who's paying for that now? And is some of that budget going to be then allocated over to the new center?
Well, every, every entity, um, is, is going to, uh, is committed to, like, human services. Uh, like Lakewood PD, like Jeffco is committed to, uh, having people housed at that location. So it shortens the gap that exists with victims getting services. All right?
I understand that, but who's paying for it? Now, if, if, if I were to go down and have problems and have to go to, quote, "human services," I would be seeing people and getting some kind of assistance.
Well, not necessarily, because sometimes they can't get there. That's the idea, Larry, of housing it all there. It's not for government, it's, it's for the victim.
But I think the same entities would still be paying for those services.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, the one point two's going for the, uh, the purchase of the building, the lease costs, the utility costs, and those things. And to be honest with you, Larry, Porchlight can come in and provide you much more detail. I'm, I'm bringing in the budget supplemental.
Mr. Urban and then Ms., Ms. Hoppe? Oh, well, then we'll reverse it. Ms. Hoppe and then Mr. Urban.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thanks for bringing this to us, Chief. My question is, in the future, this would come out of your budget. You'll be prepared to ask for it in your budget in the next year? Is that, is that kinda the plan? Or is it gonna come out of the base?
If it come out of our budget, it'd be a budgeted item like the Ralston Houses and the Juvenile Assessment Center.
And, and the, the reason why this has to be a supplemental ask is because they didn't know how much they were gonna need at, at that point in time when we were doing budgeting, um, last year.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not opposed to providing this funding. In fact, I'm thankful that the group that coalesced Porchlight together has done so. Um, I'm more concerned about looking towards the future and understanding the, uh, the ongoing costs relating to Porchlight. And I guess, uh, not necessarily a question, it's just a observation, is that as we go forward in time, I would like to understand better the types of crimes that, uh, result in individuals utilizing these services and understanding which portion or what share of crimes that occurred in Wheat Ridge or that happened upon Wheat Ridge's residents, uh, allowed them to go and use these services. So we have a better understanding of sort of our costs and benefits of utilizing the service. So we don't end up, uh, subsidizing Lakewood's crime rate by, uh, participating in the service. So they may or may not be set up at this point to understand where people are coming from, which, uh, where the crimes occurred or what have you. But from a funder perspective, I would like to understand the, the crimes that resulted in victims utilizing these services and somehow tying our funding to that aspect. So if a resident of Wheat Ridge went on to use these services, we should pay for that utilization. I just wanna be mindful of us not subsidizing some other city's crime rate because of that. So being able to identify some way to tie our funding to this in the future. I understand the upfront costs and the need to sort of come together and make this happen. But in the future, I don't wanna see just some kind of, well, this is, we're gonna share it equally amongst everybody when the, the causing or the, the impetus to need this center isn't necessarily centered in Wheat Ridge, or it may be in Wheat Ridge. So what are your thoughts about that?
Well, so Family Justice Center is, is basically there to provide, uh, all the services that a victim of domestic violence might need. So you've all seen the presentations, PowerPoints, the videos that have been presented and the types of, uh, the types of outcomes that result from, uh, domestic violence. It's not necessarily just, uh, you know, the spouse or the partner that's, uh, the victim of domestic violence, but, but you have kids involved in that and, and obviously, uh, outcomes and, uh, you know, from, from that kind of thing. So that's, that is in essence what they provide. We probably average somewhere about eight, eight hundred to nine hundred domestic violence cases, uh, a year, uh, here. Uh, about half of those are domestic violent cases where somebody is criminally charged. Uh, the others are classified as domestic incidents, uh, where there's not enough probable cause to make an arrest. We can't actually, uh, prove a case. So, uh, that percentage per population is pretty consistent with what you might see in other jurisdictions, right? Uh, you tend to see more domestic vi- you, you see domestic violence over a broad spectrum of, of our society. It's, it's not limited to, to one particular spectrum. And it, it also, uh, you know, is a situation that involves any crime that's committed against a spouse or, or a partner where there's an intimate relationship. So, so it's pretty broad in its, in its application. I am sure as, as the DA and the committee that is, that is working and the board that's working to, to put this together will start to develop an MOU or an IGA that will be based on some sort of funding formula, right? A lot of these family justice centers are, are set up, uh, based on grants. Uh, you know, there, there are a lot of grants out there for domestic violence, uh, violence... violence, Violence Against Women's Act, uh, you know, is, is one of the big federal grants, or several others, uh, both at the state and the federal level. But also, uh, to fill that gap, they rely on local government, whether that's the county or local municipalities, to help them close that, that, that operating gap. And, uh, I don't have all of the detail to provide you in terms of what those services are. Uh, but certainly, if, uh, if you'll, if you're willing to entertain this, on the eighth, Candace Coolidge from the district attorney's office and Ray Flair, uh, said that they could make the op, April eighth meeting, and you can ask some of those deeper questions if you wish to, if you wish to ask. I'm just bringing forward a request that, uh, was made to us here just a couple of weeks ago to see if we could assist in filling that gap, so they can get the funding and get this operational.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppe.
Um, so I'm, I'm gonna work towards a consensus of-
I've got another-
Oh, yeah.
I have another question before you go there, if I, if I may. Um, not to be too much of the business person here, but, uh, Golden stepped up with a, with a hard check at ten K.
Yes, sir.
And, um, do we know where, where the other municipalities are in this? And, and if they weren't, if they weren't able to, to acquire the three hundred and some odd thousand that they need now in order to move forward, um, would that affect our, our giving at this time?
So, I can, I can tell you that Lakewood is, uh, they're, uh, giving, uh, uh, or the amount that's been requested of them is a hundred thousand. Uh, it's a little bit less for Arvada and the sheriff's office. But, uh, those, uh, those three entities, Arvada, uh, Lakewood, and the sheriff's office, are making the bulk of, of this three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars that's, that's requested up. And I think it's being considered by all of those entities right now. The commissioners have, uh, have asked where other entities are, so they can make their final decision, uh, in terms of, uh, helping to close that gap.
So do I need to go twist, um, Mayor Paul and Mayor, Mayor Williams's arms?
And, and Patrick might be able to give, give some, some update on that. I know the city managers have all been in consultation and discussing this.
Yeah, as far as I know, they're all, well, they're all contributing.
Everybody's, everybody's in?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that was really what I wanted to know. Uh, Ms. Hoppe, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, first off, I just, I, I hope that with the creation of this Family Justice Center, that, um, we'll be able to see less incidences and see more support of, um, uh, victims leaving their abusers, and for more long-term effects. I worked with youth for, um, for a long time and, uh, with the family tree. And while I didn't work directly with, uh, their parents who were in the system because of, of, um, domestic violence, I, I got to work with the aftermath with the youth that were, uh, that got to witness that. And, um, so I really hope that this makes a long-term difference in our community. And so, with that, I would like to ask for a consensus for a supplemental budget, um, for a recommended contribution of eighteen thousand dollars to, uh, the Family Justice Center, to be brought forward in, on April eighth to us. Thank you.
We have consensus on it. Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you for, um, for bearing with us tonight. Wasn't, wasn't your short meeting? It was tough, but, but you know, you, you did it. All right. Thank you so much. That concludes item number three on our agenda. And I'm going back to the agenda now to see where we are, because I think we're gonna go to staff reports. Nothing? Nothing, nothing, nothing from Mr. Goff tonight? Uh, we'll go to elected officials' reports. Mr. Keeter?
Only to note, uh, I notified Ms. Shaver, but I will be out of town next Monday, and so will not be able to attend the, the meeting on Monday.
Thank you very much.
Well, that was before David was on, I think. I think Janice, Larry, I don't know if he's still out. Or, yeah, the twenty-fifth? Zach, David, or Zach, I mean, Zach, I'm sorry, George. So, that's four that's out. We still have a quorum. We have four. Oh, yeah, we still have four.
Quorum's five, isn't it?
Yes. I think Leah said she'd be here.
I'll be here? Okay. Well, let us, let us be, let us be mindful of the hour tonight, because if I don't, if I don't get home at some point, I may not be here next week. So, do, uh, do we have more, uh, more information from our electeds? Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Goff was out of town last meeting, and we all rushed out of here so fast to make, try and make a new record for a short meeting. I forgot to bring this up for elected officials, so I will announce it and let Mr. Goff finish. But I received, uh, this email from him, that, uh, the notice of quiet zone establishment for the G Line in Wheat Ridge and Arvada was submitted last Thursday to RTD. That's a couple of weeks ago. The, there is now a twenty-one day notice period before the FRA can approve the quiet zones on the G Line, and do you have an update on that?
I can speak. I, I don't. The twenty-one days is, I believe, is up, uh, March twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth would be the twenty-one day. So, um, so I, I don't, we were in DC, we were trying to get a meeting with the FRA, but the ones that we needed to talk to all were in Louisiana, I think, New Orleans or something. So, we couldn't, we couldn't grab a meeting with them. So, I haven't got an update since then. Um, the, the good news is, though, I, I think they, they're, they're rushing the quiet zone application, um, because, um, somebody from the FRA is retiring or leaving soon, so they want to get this in before that person's gone, so that they could, get it finished. And they're tying this, and my understanding is to a potential opening very soon. So, um, don't have a date yet, but it could be somewhere around March twenty-ninth. I can't confirm that, but-
Well, for all my folks out there in District Four who are closest to that, please bear with us and have patience. But hopefully, we're creeping to a, to an endpoint here.
I, uh, I'll tell you that on, I think it was, uh, March eighth, on Friday, I did go to the fiftieth anniversary celebration for RTD down at, uh, Union Station. And both, uh, the chairman of the board and the, and the executive director for RTD were, were in a very good frame of mind, because this, uh, this twenty-one day notice was also, was running concurrently with another twenty-one day notice. And so, they were, they were more optimistic than I've seen them before, so. Is there, uh, is any other business to come before our council in this study session tonight? Thank you all for, uh, Ms. Data.
One last thing. We have an urban renewal meeting tomorrow, if anyone's interested.
Thank you. And, uh, and please, for all of our citizens and, uh, folks in the room, uh, look forward to, uh, NRS meetings this week. And with that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you so much.